We're going to start in one minute.
Good evening, everyone. It's six thirty-two. I'm calling this joint village board meeting and plan commission meeting to order at six thirty-two. This meeting has been given public notice in accordance with section nineteen point eight three and nineteen point eight four Wisconsin statutes in such form. Will prize the general public and news media of subject matter that is intended for consideration and action. Roll call for village board. All trustees are present except for Jolene Peeper. She's absolutely excused. And for the plan commission, all commissioners are present and we're waiting for one commissioner, but we do have a quorum for both bodies. So we're going to move forward. A new business, item A, multi-family development policy. This is discussion continuing from the May fifth and twelfth meetings. And I'm really looking forward to this discussion tonight. This is a continuation of several meetings where we've had discussion on. What's the path forward for the Village Center? We've done a lot of heavy lifting from both the plant commission and the village trustees. So I'm again, I'm really looking forward to the next phase. Sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jeff Retzlaff, Community Development Director. At the direction of President Soderberg back in April and through May, both the plan commission and the board began discussing. The notion of possibly developing a specific policy concerning multifamily housing development. Tonight's discussion is obviously further discussion of that. With the intent of getting us closer to determining if there's a need and or a desire for a specific policy concerning multifamily housing development. Back in April and May, we began the process of discussing some basic existing conditions in the village population. Median income, house, income, population trends, and more specifically with regard to population trends. We did discuss how the median age in the and Germantown has steadily increased, reflecting a broader demographic trend. Not only through Washington County, but the region. Our, our median age in the year two thousand was approximately thirty-six point four years and increased to forty-two point three years by twenty twenty-three. This upward trend reflects the aging of the local population. And also with a notable twenty-one percent decrease in residents in the age twenty to forty-four bracket between twenty year two thousand and twenty seventeen. Compared to an overall decrease of only twelve percent in Washington County overall. So arguably, the village of Germantown, relatively speaking, is aging more so than Washington County as a whole. A long-term residents are aging in place, contributing to the rise of that median age. Population growth, while the village population has grown, it hasn't kept pace with other communities in Washington County or the nationwide. So we're growing slower, but still growing. And we, as I mentioned, we do have that youth outmigration in that twenty to forty-four category. Where folks are tending to move away and not come back in the village within that age group. So in summary, our demographic profile is shifting towards an older population. This trend influenced by aging residents, slower population growth, and an outmigration of younger individuals. All will impact are the issues of housing in the village going forward. With respect to existing housing characteristics, both the type and the occupancy. We looked at information that yield information indicating that of the eight thousand six hundred nineteen total residential units in the village. In twenty twenty-four, approximately seventy-three percent were single family, seventy-five percent, if you were to add in the mobile slash manufactured home category. With twenty-five percent in the multifamily classification. In terms of occupancy type or ownership, seventy-six percent of those units were owner occupied, twenty-one percent rental, and four percent were vacant. Obviously, you can see with a twenty-one percent rental and twenty-five percent multifamily, there's a something's amiss there because. Isn't multifamily all rental? That's the question that we typically get presented to us, or at least that's the assumption. If it's multifamily, it's rental. Well, as we'll find out, that's not necessarily the case. And these statistics bear that out. Further existing conditions, housing values, the median value for owner occupied unit in Germantown was just over three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four. That's not the same as sales price that have increased dramatically. As we heard from some of our real estate folks at our June twenty-third special meeting of the plan commission. One fact that is interesting to note and that the P C and President Soderberg were interested in knowing is how do we compare to our other communities? We, we ran some statistics and we picked seventeen municipalities in the Washington, Waukesha, Ozarksi and Milwaukee County area comparable in terms of. Population, median household income. And we found that out of those seventeen communities, Germantown was the fourth highest in terms of the percentage of single family units. With that seventy-five percent single family unit rate. So going forward, if we are going to adopt a specific policy, things that we should keep in mind. Here are some typical arguments that we hear for why we should have a policy. Potential community impacts. We need to get a handle on and mitigate or minimize school district capacity and what I call enrollment management. Issues. Also, we need to keep a handle on and minimize impacts on our overall infrastructure beyond schools. Including roads, water, sewer, police, and emergency medical services. Another argument we hear typically. Is the issue of community character and identity and how multifamily housing may impact that compared to where we currently are going forward. As well as we hear the argument about property values being impacted. And also the, the, the demographic and socioeconomic changes. We often hear some, in some cases, very irrational comments that you, we can't have that kind of development. That'll bring that type of people here. You know, we hear those sort of arguments and we have to roll with that, but it is an issue that we have to deal with. So what about arguments against the policy? Well, we have higher housing costs and a result, a housing shortage of affordable housing. Housing that is affordable by those who live and live in the village of Germantown and those who want to come to the village of Germantown. And when I say that, I don't necessarily mean, as is one of the misconceptions, that affordable housing equals subsidized or low income housing. That's another misnomer that we need to get over. Those higher housing costs and housing shortage, you know, impacts the younger population. They're unable to move in. Which results in turn in a shrinking student population and enrollment, localized labor shortages, decreasing community vitality and sustainability. And also affects our older population who are unable to stay. They have a desire for smaller, less expensive and relatively maintenance-free housing that multifamily housing could bring that may not necessarily be provided. By just single family housing going forward. Other arguments against the policy, it may impacts increased socioeconomic differences. Yielding a, a dramatic difference between lower incomes and higher incomes. In some cases, that impacts new businesses who are wanting to move to the community, looking for job and job base. That people have relatively lower incomes that would fill those jobs. And if there's no housing for those people, there's no jobs that are close by, and so they go and look elsewhere. So that falls into that missed economic opportunity category. And other things, although relatively minor, to consider increases in sprawl in areas that are intended for rural preservation. As those of you remember in the twenty fifty plan, we looked at the issue of how many new dwelling units, housing units are projected to come into the village through the year twenty fifty. And if we assumed all of them were on five acre tracts of land or one acre or half an acre, how much land that would consume? And we, we led, it led us to the conclusion that, you know, allowing for smaller sized lots, higher density. Whether that's single family or multifamily will reduce the impact on our rural areas that we intend to preserve going forward. And finally, there's the issue of legal challenges. If you're going to rule out and not allow multifamily housing that caters to certain lower incomes. You're, you're, you could be faced with fair housing and discriminatory issues like other communities in the Milwaukee metro area have dealt with in the past. But with that in mind, if we do adopt a policy, there are some considerations we have to make regardless of what that policy is. What the definition of single family versus multifamily is. Is a detached dwelling unit on a separate lot owned and occupied by one household, single family? Obviously, yes. A duplex, two side-by-side units in one building with separate egress, shared floor to roof, dividing wall and attached garages. Is that single family or is that multifamily? Well, according to the Regional Planning Commission, that's a single family category. According to some of the census information that we have, duplexes are included in the single family calculation. So we would need to sort out and decide where we want to put that in our categories. Townhouse or row house, where those type of units have two or more units of either side by side or stacked. In one building with a separate, each one has a separate egress, a shared floor to roof, dividing wall or a ceiling with attached garages. Again, slightly more number of units in a single building, in some communities, they deal with townhouses and row houses as a single family category. And finally apartments, this is the traditional category that we're almost more familiar with. Where there's four or more units either side by side or stacked on top of each other in one building that has a shared access. Shared floor to roof and ceiling dividing walls and detached or underneath parking. Again, that obviously would be a multifamily category, but then we asked ourselves, what about ownership? Does ownership come into play and does that affect the definition of single family versus multifamily? Obviously, one of the things we hear about, oh, we'd like condominiums. Well, multifamily units are condominiums in most cases. There are single family condominiums, but for the most part condominiums are multifamily. So does that fall into the multifamily category that we're trying to restrict or regulate? I don't know, but we'll have to decide that. Other assumptions and misconceptions that we really need to deal with too, when we adopt any policy, is this notion that for one, multifamily housing means rental. Not necessarily. Single family housing means owner occupied. No, not necessarily. As we're coming to learn now, we were getting approached by developers who are asking, hey, we have this new, new type of project. It's a single family unit, but it's a, it's not owner occupied, it's rental. And so how do we deal with that? Does that fall into the single family or the multifamily category? Gets back to the whole issue of rental and the transient nature of it and how that impacts school district and the population and the, the student enrollment concept. And finally, affordable housing or rental housing means subsidized or low income housing. Those are things we hear quite often, or at least they're reflected in the comments that we hear in opposition to multifamily. That is a misnomer that we need to deal with too as we go forward. So how should we deal with a ratio like that? You know, one of the things that we might want to consider to help put this into perspective is. You know, how do we let the historical or the current ratio affect? How we determine what a future policy would be as far as a percentage, if we do adopt a policy where we maintain a certain percentage of single family versus multifamily. We need to be careful not to pick a policy ratio that is reflective of just our history and not of the trends that are being experienced today currently in terms of affordability. And most importantly, generational preferences. An analogy I, I have is the auto industry. The federal government certainly isn't going to say, hey, the current ratio of sedans to other vehicles. Is forty percent sedans to everything else, knowing that only fifteen percent of the sales of vehicles today are sedans. Nobody makes a sedan anymore. Everybody wants an S U V. Everybody wants something that they feel is safer. Some people think S U Vs are more affordable. But certainly, an S U V is a generational preference. And it's not any different than housing. It's very similar. So we need to consider that going forward as well. Now, moving on to the arguments for a policy, the one argument that we hear, or at least have heard most often and loudest. Has been from our residents in favor of adopting a policy presumably, based on the potential impacts on our school district capacity. And so that leads us to the Germantown School District's Community Growth and Projections Report. I have to say, I'm, I'm very grateful to the school district for having this type of study done. It has provided an immense amount of information that is, is certainly helpful, I'm sure, to the school district, but also to the village. There's just no question about it. And, and I'd like to think that between the two entities, we can work toward a regular update of this. Every five years or something along those lines, because it really is good information. With that said, as was discussed back on our June twenty-third special meeting of the plan commission. That study was specifically conducted to project impact of future residential development and demographic changes on future student enrollment. And how that future student enrollment impacts current school capacities and their configurations. Jumping into some of the results, because I think it's very important that we look closely at this and how it relates to the village of Germantown and our residential development proposals. and how it relates to the Village of Germantown and our residential development proposals that we're dealing with currently. In that study, the M.D. Rofers Group assumed that between 2025 and 2040, a total of 2,140 new housing units would build in the Germantown School District. Forty percent of those, just over 1,000, would be single-family. That would be in a detached or a one-building, a more traditional single-family type of unit that's owner-occupied and possibly includes some rentals. Of that 2,140, 53% or 11,350, I'm sorry, 1,135 units were assumed to be multifamily. Again, 53% of the total. That would be located in either duplex, townhome, row house, stack flat, or the traditional apartments. Breaking that out specifically for the Village of Germantown, the Rofers study assumed 1,717 new housing units in the Village of Germantown alone. That equates to 80% of the total new housing units in the entire Germantown School District through 2040. 100% of the multifamily units are assumed to occur in the Village of Germantown. That's that 1,135 units. Of those, 1,717, 34% were assumed to be single-family. 582 units, single-family. 66% are projected to be multifamily units. So one-third of the new housing units through 2040, Rofers says, are going to be single-family units. Two-thirds are going to be multifamily units. When you look at that a little bit further, 850 of those new housing units in the Village of Germantown, 50% occur in three areas in the village. Sutton Farm area, 275 total units, 143 of those, single-family, 132, multifamily. Blackstone Creek, the Rofers study assumed 300 total multifamily units in the Blackstone Creek area. And the Village Center. The Rofers study assumed 275 total multifamily units developing in the Village Center, the Pilgrim at McQuon Road redevelopment project. So again, of the 707 or 83% of the total 850 units in those three areas in the village are going to be or projected to be multifamily development. So the Rofers is projecting for the village a heavy dose of multifamily development. Now, with that, they projected student generation rates for single-family housing. For a new single-family unit, they project 0.61 students per new single-family unit. For multifamily, 0.11 students per new multifamily unit. That's six times more number of student population in a single-family versus a multifamily unit. I guess another way to put it is you would take six multifamily units to generate the same number of schoolkids as one single-family unit under the Rofers assumptions. So with those student generation rates, the number of units that are projected, Rofers indicates that the resulting student enrollment changes between 2025 and 2040 include 148 total student increase in the 4K to 12th grade number of students, 129 elementary student increase, a 21 middle school student increase, and a two-student high school decrease over that time period. So what about the impact of those changes in student enrollment? Well, by 2040, Rofers is projecting that 80% of the maximum capacity is reached for all of the schools in the district. With regard to elementary schools, 88% of the max capacity is reached. MacArthur reaches 90% by 2035, Rockfield by 90% by 2040, and County Line actually decreases from 90% in 2027 to 80% by 2040. Overall, 73% of the maximum capacity is reached for middle schools, and 76% of the maximum capacity is reached for the high school. I'm not going to speak for the school district, but those numbers say to me, this is good. We're okay, and maybe there's some reshuffling that needs to be done in terms of the, the alignment of this individual school buildings, but the capacity is there. The enrollment management issue with the transients, that's another issue that the village really has no control over, but that's, that's a topic for maybe another day. So let's look at the existing single-family versus multifamily housing ratio. The existing 2025 housing, housing ratio in that box on the top indicates that we have a total, again, of 8,619 total units, 6,464, single-family, 2,155. That yields a current ratio of 75% single-family, 25% multifamily. It's what I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation. That's where we're at. Well, what happens when you add in the housing unit projections that Rofers is assuming in their study? In their study that shows that the school district impacts are, are not going to be overcapacity. Second table, if you look on the bottom row, the Rofers projection, again, 1,717 total units are projected to be added in the village by the year 2040. 582 or just under 34% single-family, just over 66% multifamily. So when you add that up, you get a total unit of 10,336, with 7,046 of those, single-family, 3,290, multifamily. And the ratio that's yielded from that is 68.2% single-family to 31.8% multifamily. So again, if you're going to be looking at a specific policy and, and if you're going to be leaning heavily on the Rofers study, as I think we should in terms of projecting what the impact would be on one of the more critical components of what we need to be cognizant of, our school district capacity, that percentage should be in the ballpark of that 68 to 32% ratio. That's my opinion. Now, moving forward, what would be a Plan Commission meeting without reference to the 2050 Comprehensive Plan? Wisconsin Statute 66.1001, our comprehensive planning statute requirements require us to have a housing element in our 2050 Plan, which we do. That element needs to include a compilation of objectives, policies, programs of the local government to provide adequate housing supply that meets existing and forecasted housing demand in the local governmental unit. The element shall assess the age, structure, value, and occupancy characteristics of the housing stock. And here's the important part. The element shall also identify specific policies and programs that promote the development of housing for residents of the local governmental unit, the village, and provide a range of housing choices that meet the needs of persons of all income levels and of all age groups and persons with specific needs or special needs, and policies and programs that promote the availability of land for the development or redevelopment of low-income and moderate-income housing, and policies and programs to maintain or rehabilitate the local governmental unit existing housing stock. So as part of that process of developing the 2050 Plan, we did some community survey. One of this, the, the overall community survey that we did back, back in 2019 had a specific question. Question was, question 23. You know, as the village continues to grow and development occurs, what type of new residential housing do you think the village should allow to develop? Well, in terms of our responses, this is what our, our survey yielded. The, the responses from our residents who are strongly in favor of or strongly in agreement with or somewhat in agreement with for each of these types of housing types are as follows. Single-family detached, 75.1%. That's kind of a no-brainer. That's the expectation. Oddly enough, that's exactly what we've got. Single-family detached, the duplexes, in some cases, the townhomes. 44.1% of people surveyed and responded were in favor strongly or somewhat of that type of a housing unit. Whether you call it single-family or multifamily, it's multiple units together. Duplexes and two-family, 28.6%. Multifamily condominium, 37.5%. Multifamily apartments, rental, specifically rental, 13.4%. There it is. That's the, that's the answer that we hear. That's the comment that we get regularly when there's a multifamily proposal. It's the folks that are, are commenting that we don't want it. Nobody wants it. They're referring to this, the 13.4% of multifamily apartments, the traditional rental-type units. The other types of multifamily, there are folks that are in favor of those. Senior housing, whether it's assisted or nursing, 43.6%. Senior apartments or condominiums, 49.9%. Almost 50% of the residents who responded are favorable either strongly or somewhat to more senior apartments or condominiums. Finally, manufactured homes, 11.1%. We don't want any more mobile homes. That's the, that's the response that we typically get. So these results, you know, show that there is support for other types of multifamily housing. Is it unanimous? No, not by any stretch. But it is and doesn't show what some would argue is as dire as, as others would argue that multifamily, nobody wants it. That's not true. There are certain types of multifamily that everybody or most people don't want, but not everybody. So in our 2050 Plan, we did include a policy. In the Housing Implementation Plan, that policy reads, maintain a balanced, balanced housing mix and concentrate new multifamily development in walkable village center areas or other neighborhoods, districts, or corridors that provide connections to the regional transportation network. And it refers to the NDC table that talks about that. So, you know, currently, we have what if one might argue is effectively a policy on maintaining a ratio of single-family to multifamily. Maintain a balanced housing mix. If you want to go further than that and adopt specific numbers, we can certainly do that. But for the most part, we have a policy that deals with maintaining a balanced housing mix. So with that going forward, we've discussed this with the Village President Soderberg and his, his desire, and I, I agree, that going forward, with regard to single-family versus multifamily housing development, what we need to do is with every new proposal, staff needs to include in its reports an assessment of the effect on the single-family to multifamily housing ratio. How does it affect the existing or the current ratio that we have? What's the impact on the school district capacities? Well, we've got the Rofers study as a baseline that we can compare to. And not only do they give us total numbers, but they have numbers specifically by, by sub-areas within the district. Some 60, 71 different areas that are broken down in small increments. So we can see exactly when a new development is proposed, what impact that has based on what Rofers assumed in their study. Also, staff is going to report on an assessment of property tax revenue impact, impact fee revenue, and also, and most certainly as have been done through other departments in their commentaries, impact on other public facility capacities. And more importantly, the Plan Commission, in their review of new housing proposals, the Plan Commission needs to consider the community character impact aspects of it. Not only in reviewing new proposals, but also in terms of setting or possibly revising our codes to reflect what we truly, you know, want to maintain in terms of community character impact. You know, the one thing we hear quite often is particularly with respect to the Village Center proposal, you know, we don't want five-story buildings. You know, we have a handful of three-story buildings throughout the village. You know, maybe, maybe that's the cutoff. Maybe that's the, the top of the community character impact that we're willing to deal with. And if that's the case, then let's work that into the zoning code and deal with it that way and not adopt a specific policy that would possibly, you know, throw the baby out with the bathwater sort of thing with that kind of a policy versus something else. And finally, you know, Plan Commission needs to consider property value impacts and also, and more importantly, consistency with the 2050 Plan neighborhood, district, and corridor land uses and the overall policies. So again, the purpose of tonight's discussion is to get closer to making a decision. You know, do we need, do we, do we desire a specific policy? With that, I'll open it up for conversation. I'm here for any, any questions, but I'm more interested in hearing what you folks have to say, both Plan Commission and Board alike.
Thank you. Very, very detailed, very well thought out. Do appreciate that. Turning the clock back, when the election was going on, one of the things that I wanted to do specifically for Village Center was to take the emotions out of the argument. Do we need more multifamily? Do we need more rental, et cetera, et cetera? Jeff, you and your team went down that path of collecting the data and did a great job. We know where we fall in lines with our peer communities in the region. Then there was some discussion at the village level. I think David, you mentioned not to have a specific number, and there's discussion going back and forth on that. And, you know, I've had a, a paradigm shift in terms of my own thought process. One of the neat things about what we're doing now for every development going forward through the Plan Commission, can you go back to that slide where you put, we talk about the tax revenue, the impact fees, impact to the school district? And then one of the things we wanted to do is look at the single-family, multifamily housing ratio to ensure that there's a proper mix. What does that mean? Very objective, I get that. Very broad, I get that. But one of the neat things is that for every project coming in front of the Plan Commission, it will be looked at. And it will be discussed in detail, and then it'll be discussed at the village board level as well. So I'm leaning against having a specific number where we hang our hat on, but more something like this, and we just let the process do its thing with the Plan Commission and the village board. But these are the things that we're adding today, and I don't know if we've done this in the past. I just don't have that information, if we've talked about.
Sutton Farms was the first one.
Right, okay.
We were able to include all those things.
So these are the things that, that are new to the Plan Commission and also for providing information from a transparency standpoint for the village board and also for the community that we weren't doing before. So, so this way, this is where I'm going to think, say that I don't support having a policy. I support, as long as we follow this, I think we'll be fine. So I'll, and what's, what, what's going to happen after this? Jeff's going to get a lot of information. He's going to come back with a staff recommendation for the Plan Commission and then to the full village board. So I'll open it up. Terry.
I totally agree with both you and with our Community Development Director. I feel that the policy is very succinctly stated in the 2050 Plan, where you do say, maintain a balanced housing mix and concentrate new multifamily development in the walkable part of the village. I mean, that's, it's, it's actually intelligent common sense, I guess I would call it. And why would we want to constrict that anymore? We are living in such a changeable time. When you look at everything that's happened in the past, say, 10 to 15 years, how housing stock everywhere has changed dramatically and how more and more people don't want to mow the grass. And young people or professionals are looking for upscale places to live but can't afford an $800,000 home. We have to account for this if we're going to be a thriving village in the future. And we just can't cut ourselves off and say, we don't want apartments or we don't want multifamily. I just think that's a very short-sighted view. And I think we are set up as a village to look at each development individually according to the impact it will have on everything. The school district, where we're going to fall, again, on that table that you had at the beginning of your presentation, whether we have 25, 26, 27% multifamily versus single-family. I think that's the intelligent way to approach this, and I totally support both what you and our president have said.
Meg, Tracy Cuts.
I also don't think we should have a ratio, because if all of a sudden we meet that ratio and some new development comes in, we're just going to be back here changing the rules and the zoning or whatever, anyway. I do think three stories should be the max. And back to the state statute about having things that are affordable for all income levels, all of these proposals we've had, Sutton Farm and the other things we've seen just in concept, rental units were, what, minimum $1,600 and up? That's not really affordable for young families, so I don't know how that solves the issue of letting young families into the village. So I, I just think, I don't know what we can do about that, but with Sutton Farms, we let them increase the size of the lots for the zoning, not the lots, the house on the lot, so you have the bigger lot. So I don't know if there's something we can do that would contribute to cutting down on the costs.
Further comments? Yes?
I really do like the criteria that is set up in lieu of the policy. So I am in, in support of that being included when everything goes through with the Plan Commission. I felt like it is important to not forget that, that one slide showed, I think, 13% of people were in favor of multifamily rentals. And then it showed condos were at about 40%. So I think that those statistics as well should be remembered or possibly included in that, in lieu of the policy. in that in lieu of the policy page.
Want me to talk? Okay. I agree with not putting too many parameters on the front end. If we proceed the way we're talking about going, have a community-involved adjustment of the 2050 plan, so we have some decent parameters to work with for each regional area we're talking about. I think that we design the neighborhoods, we design things as the as the conditions require. So no, no firm rules upfront.
Further discussion? David.
So as far as multifamily, I think it's a matter of how it's used, where it's used, and when it's used. For a long time, I have been on the Plan Commission and talking about the right place for it. If you want to develop a walkable community, you want to talk about smart development, you put your multifamily in a more condensed area where all your businesses are, so you have the walkable community. That tells us to focus multifamily in the central around the central business district. When somebody comes and wants to put multifamily on the north end of town, that's the wrong place for it. Then we look to the Plan Commission and say, hey, you guys need to monitor and and set the standards to that's the wrong place, the wrong use, the wrong time for it. Multifamily at three stories, three stories is our current height limitation. I would allow taller buildings in very specific and certain circumstances. If there is a accent feature, if you are proposing a public amenity that is going to take up some of your land, maybe we'll allow you to offset the public feature for a little bit taller building. Maybe I'll go at four stories for that building, maybe five. But I'm not saying we change our rules to five stories. You got it for that fourth or fifth floor, you need to look at what is going on in the development, what the proposal really is. Sometimes it will make sense to have that feature element. If you look at this, these standards for other communities and you start examining these other communities, there's a reason why they are developing more multifamily than they used to. Wawa Tosa, it's the intersection of forty-one and ninety-four. There is no potential further development there. What if they want to develop more residential, it's got to go up. There's no other land. It's landlocked. Grafton, if you actually look at their maps, they're landlocked as well. There is no more land for them to develop outward. They don't have the farm fields anymore. They've developed it all. They have to start going up. Cudahy and Oak Creek, they're right on the river, right on the lake. They are packed. They have to go up as well. We do not have to go up. When we want to go up, I'd say let's keep it in the central business district. So I would let that, I would agree with keeping the guidelines in place, but not establishing exact numbers. And let's hold off on establishing a firm height limitation. Let's look at what's going on in those individual developments, and we leave that to the Plan Commission to start thinking about.
Thank you. Further comments, discussion? Russ?
Firstly, just want to say thank you. The tent of the Rofers report, you just used it exactly how we were hoping it would be used by the village. Take it in as a data point, use it as part of the formula to figure out what's going on. I know there was a lot of conversation on the pause and was that a tactic in all those those scenarios? And realistic, this is was the outcome we were hoping for, right? That this information was going to be you taken seriously, used and implemented. As far as the hard number goes, I don't see that as a good structure to the point of right place and right time for certain scenarios. I would like to see a three-story limit. In this village, it seems to fit. Are there scenarios maybe where a large space of that property is going to be allowed for public access and public use? Maybe then in requirements, they might have to go up higher than that in order to get the development they need? Maybe. But should those be looked at individually, probably more the appropriate point if we're going to not put a limit on on the other direction? So thank you for that.
Thank you. Further comments?
Rick? Yeah, I think I I've heard it all here that, first off, I don't think we're going to put a number on this, and I wouldn't agree with that either. I think a number is limiting, and we're going to come back a lot and change it. So we're going to be liars. So, you know, forget that part. I think the 2050 housing plan comment in there is a good one, that it has to be a balanced housing mix. You know, multifamily development in walkable village center areas, like David said, you don't put it out away from there, you bring it in close. I really don't want to see any tight restrictions right now. It's got to be on a case-by-case basis. There might be a good case for this. I think your analogy of the cars is a pretty good one. You know, cars evolved from sedans to SUVs, but not only that, now they're electric, now they're hybrids, and they're going to be self-driving soon. That's all evolving. That's how housing is evolving. And we aren't, we aren't single family only anymore, and it's not going to be that way. So I think the the way that we have it written and with the direction of the Plan Commission, we can maintain this and and do a good job on it.
Thank you. Further comments? Robert?
I guess I'll echo the same sentiments that most of the members had. My biggest concern when this all started was that we're trying to lock in on a on a number, which I'm sure we would not have been able to do because there's very strong opinions either way on this. My other concern was how was that going to be enforced? And as we saw here by the descriptions that we saw, there's some, it's not black and white at all. There is some variability within the definition of multifamily versus single family in that. So I think, as Jeff stated, we do have a policy in place. As trustee Miller said, it's a case-by-case thing that has to be looked at, and I think we have enough policy to be able to stay the course as far as that good mix. I think we have a good mix. I'm looking at all these percentages and the goals that we're stating, and we're real close to that. I mean, I don't know if we lucked out or or how we did it, but we're really close to where I think that that we want to be. So certainly stay away from the numbers. The policy looks good, and I think we can wrap that up with this meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you. Further comments, discussion? David?
One more issue on the school division lines. I keep hearing that the issue for the school system is the transient nature of rental property. If we have a focused area for that transient housing, the rental properties, the apartment buildings in the central area around, again, around the central business district, the school board could actually have a policy where it's the transient housing that is part of a flexible boundary line so that in the central business district around that, you can actually move the kids from to three schools, as I've seen in the in your maps. You can go to MacArthur, you can go to, what's the south county line, and then you can go out, I believe it's out to Rockfield.
Amy Bell.
Amy Bell. So and that's really only affecting the rental property markets that are the transient people as they're moving around to that area. You move them, you have those be the boundaries. So that's an opportunity for us to.
Thank you. Russ?
Yeah, so we we already employ that strategy. We do have a flex zone through the the central part of the village. In realities, that's exactly what we use it for, right? Balancing the two schools, it's usually county line or MAC. We would have to look at expanding that. With that comes transportation costs, obviously, but that's part of doing business and management of it. The realities are sometimes parents move into those areas and think they're going to pick which school that is, and that's that's not the case. So it's an interesting conversation upfront, an honest conversation upfront with those families coming in. Hey, at this time, you'd probably most likely go to school X. But once the child's in one of those schools or the family's in one of those schools, the goal's to keep them in that school while they're within our community, obviously.
But if your if your issue is that family moves to another apartment and moves to another apartment, moves to another apartment successfully or successively, then how do you deal with that type of thing? And that's where this larger area and specifically evolving with the transient population, you can tell that population that in this area, you're not the one who moved in and bought a house to be in this district. You just happen to be in this district, and you're going to be shuffled around as we need to.
I think we would be very cautious in our approach to that from a discriminatory standpoint. And we would absolutely have to be. But like I said, that's an upfront conversation we have. I think it's a management tool that we will employ. I'd see that area getting bigger if the village is intent on bringing more of that housing to this, to that centralized area. Those two schools are just the most impacted. And that's the whole point for us on this is we have the information upfront, we can plan for down the road. So absolutely.
Thank you. Josh?
When I look at the percentages in the, I guess, when when was Saxony Village built? What year was that? Was that the, here, 2018? So we've got Renwood South, Renwood North, Harvest Hills, the remainder of Woodland Ponds, Heritage Park North, Phase Two of Prairie Meadows, and then, you know, a lot of infill lots throughout the village. And I think that's the last apartment living created. So what did that ratio look like before those four hundred houses? You know, what did the percentage look like? Because I, I mean, you said, Bob, we're pretty spot on accidentally. But what did it look like before? Before that, we've been going gangbusters building, single family, but haven't hit anything that's been a price point that most people would consider affordable or entry level. So I, I agree, don't need to put a limit on the, we don't need to set a number for it. I'll echo what Rick said. I I agree with the every, every project being looked at under a microscope individually instead of saying, oh, we have a, we kill projects at three stories. I'd like to hear the whole, lay it all out before the bodies that decide and work through it.
So great. Thank you. Bob?
Just a commentary. I know we have an ex-school board member here and a current school board member here. I'm just trying to understand why we put so much focus on the school system. It seems like that's the tail wagging the dog. Would we stop a development because the schools say that we're at capacity? I don't think that's the way it should be approached. I think that we continue to develop in a sensible way, we the village, and then the school board has to react to that. So I I just feel this is a little backwards. I don't know any other community that does that. My brother was the president of the school board in Waukesha, and he was actually surprised to hear that we were going this route. So I don't know. To me, it doesn't seem like we need to react to help the school board. I mean, they they need to react how we develop the village. Just my opinion.
Yeah, you know, as a former school board member for twelve years and nine years as school board president, getting back to when Village Center was initially discussed, there's a lot of emotions out there in terms of potential impact that that high-density housing may have on MacArthur. We've done our due diligence, thanks to staff, did a great job. But I've had conversations with with others within the schools. I'm not going to name who, but, you know, I I agree one hundred percent with you, Bob. What I think is different now is that I want to say we're more transparent, we're discussing it more, and if it does impact a particular school, we're talking about it. And I don't think we talked about it as much as the community wanted to talk about it, but we're talking about it, and if it does have an impact, there's going to be a discussion that if we do this, it may trigger something on the school district side which may impact the taxpayers. But we're going to be talking about it, and I certainly don't want to have, if we have a wonderful development, that someone wants to come into the German town to do something, and it does have an impact, we're going to have a conversation. So I agree one hundred percent with you. So Terry?
Just a quick follow-up on that. I think we're fortunate enough not just to have the tail wagging the dog, we have the whole dog here. First of all, it works according to the research. And second, I really like the fact that we're all working together on this for the future, so there are no surprises. What's wrong with that? Why can't we be different than other communities and do it that way? So I think it's a great approach.
Jan?
Thank you. So I agree with some of the panel, and then I have some other things. One of my concerns is multifamily. And as Director Reslov mentioned, there are several definitions, and I think it multifamily needs to be categorized as you have on this slide, single family detached, single family attached. You need, I think we might even need more than multifamily condominium, multifamily apartments. They have to be, actually, we need to understand what we have now separately. And if this is what we have, that's fine, but it says 2019 to me. So I think that having a strong count of what we actually have within our village is going to help us make smart decisions for growth down the road. The other item that I just wanted to bring up is that all this is based on growth from 2025 to 2040, and the numbers really aren't moving a lot. And to substantiate that, there was an article in the municipality which we get, and it's a, it's about population gains and losses. And in Wisconsin, one hundred and thirty-eight cities are projected to lose population. And in, and also, three hundred and one villages are projected to lose an average of one hundred and fifty-one people. So in the next, from 2020 to 2040 projections, and you can read about it in the municipality April 2025. The other thing that I I really looked at in this study was that the Rofers, Rofers? Rofers? Study, they utilized three of the village's proposed developments, and they are Sutton Farms, Blackstone Creek, and the Village Center. And I'm, I'm wondering, does that leave room for anyone else? And how did they get those areas specifically? And so I, I think that three stories is high enough. I mean, our village hall and our library are that tall. It's my opinion. But the other thing I would really like is the Plan Commission to publish on our website what the process is for bringing development forward. So there is complete transparency. And I think that would make not only the process, when it's coming to the Plan Commission, when it's coming to the village board, then everything is laid out, there aren't any hiccups when the developer comes and says, oh, I forgot, or I didn't know we had to fill that form out. So there are some, there are some production efficiencies that way. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've heard from everyone except Bridget. What are your thoughts?
So I like that we've kind of gone through the whole cycle and kind of taken all of us along for should we, shouldn't we, how do we approach multifamily development and working through, well, should we assign a number to it? And does that make sense? Does it not make sense? So I also think that it would be in our best interest to keep things the way they are where there isn't a percentage for the developments. And I also think it makes sense for us to keep things the way they are in the recommendation that three stories or less. But I think there are some instances where five stories may be appropriate. So keeping it as a guideline versus a requirement, I think, is helpful and beneficial. It does mean that at the Plan Commission- It does mean that at the Plan Commission level, we may get meetings where people are upset and want to talk about the heights and the densities and the things. But it's really the, the job of Plan Commission to work through those details at a case by case basis and then bring that recommendation forward to the Village Board.
Thank you. Further comments? Bill?
Just one quick thing. I, I think a lot of the conversations we had about multifamily rental early on and the school district were tied more to the tax base in those buildings and those structures. I'm not so sure that, that, I know that came up, but I just, that's a, probably a false consideration. I, it shouldn't be there. Obviously, it was included with, with Village Center being in here, and we still were okay. But if we had a large system put in, a large complex put in, and maybe several hundred apartments, well, it would have to be a consideration.
Right. Russ?
Just to clarify some of what Jan was asking, I think as far as why is those three development? That was with Roffers meeting with the village. And maybe Mr. Kreckel can highlight some of that as to what those were highlighted. I think A, they were the top conversations at the time and the most forefront as far as development goes. I think that would be really the only realistic, why those three kind of keep rising to the top. As far as kind of the tail wagging the dog, the, the district has never looked to be driving this conversation, but simply a part of the conversation. And I think this process has allowed us to, to have a seat at the table for that. Absolutely. We have to respond to village development, but we have to do that responsibly in, in planning for the future. Roffers asked us to start looking at this in 2030, and here we are in 2025 looking at it. So we're ahead of that ballgame to help plan. And then we're going to continue that. I think there'll be a revisit to that report at some point. But not the sole data point ever, should that be considered just a data point along the conversation. The way that this looks like it's going to be kind of structured and organized from here out is a commitment to the totality of the conversation. And we're excited for that process versus these hard numbers here and there. So thank you.
Thank you.
Steve? Yeah, I can just provide some additional background on, on how those numbers were arrived at and why those specific projects were identified. The Roffers staff invited the village staff in for a couple of different meetings with Community Development Director and Associate Planner and myself. And when they came in, they had really done their homework before they sat down with us. And basically, they looked at various maps of the village and identified vacant parcels within the village that were, that, that had, had the potential for development. And, you know, really went through almost one by one on those with staff and said, you know, what do you see happening here and when do you see that happening? And obviously, since these were projects that had already been brought forward, I think those were ones that Roffers identified as being most likely to occur. So I don't want to speak for them, but I think that's why you see these, these were listed and identified by Roffers. I mean, there are, there is capacity for other projects to occur. And, you know, I think when they looked at the total, Roffers was looking at the demand for this type of housing in the future in the village. So there, it, it could be in these three projects. Obviously Sutton Farms is the one that's been approved, and that one is moving forward. Blackstone Creek, we don't have a firm proposal now, so we don't know. Roffers estimated that to be 300 units. That may be, may be lower than that. It may be something very different than that. And the Village Center, I think, as everyone in this room is well aware, is, is in flux right now. So that number, you know, may very well not be, probably won't be 275 units. So, but I think the, the point that Roffers was looking at is those are projects that are, that are identified that are likely to move forward. And I think the total number was based more on what they saw as of the long term demand for this type of housing within the village, whether it's in these three projects or other places.
Jeff?
I just want, need to, to add on to those comments from Russ and Steve. This particular slide does show that in addition to the three projects that are specifically named, Sutton Farm, Blackstone Creek, and the Village Center, the Roffers study did analyze additional single family, multifamily units in the village. In fact, those three projects comprise just 50% of the total new housing units that they analyzed for the Village of Germantown. There's another 50% that brings the total from 850 for those three projects to the 1717 number that was analyzed by Roffers. So there's a lot more room, if you will, in the study for additional housing development beyond just those three projects. So that's an important thing to consider. And as we, time goes on, for example, you know, we, if we get a project along Division Road, for example, that proposes 25 units, we'll look at what the Roffers study assumed for that particular area and we'll report on that, whether it's consistent with what was done or higher or lower. But there's, there's a lot of other, there's a lot more development that Roffers analyzed to come up to their conclusions than just those three projects. One last point. When we looked into what other communities have, have in terms of their own policies, we only found one, and that was Oconomowoc, the city of Oconomowoc. Where back in 2022, they had a housing study and they, they adopted a 6040 single family, multifamily mix. Actually, I should say a 6040 mix, but it was for owner occupied versus rental. So a slight variation on the single family, multifamily, probably because they came to the same conclusions. The definition of what is single family versus multifamily was a little too complicated. So let's just boil it down to ownership versus rental. That was a policy against 6040 that they adopted back then. And I've since learned that they're already adjusting that based on new projects and new development.
Thank you. Rick?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment about the height and that. There's only been, there's only a few of us on the board now that were around with Saxony Village. But Saxony Village already had the zoning to do exactly what they did. And they came to the village and said, if we are allowed to go up four stories, we will give more green space and we will create a municipal parking lot on Main Street. And there was a lot of outcry from the residents around there that they didn't want that. And ultimately, it, it got voted down and they built exactly what they were zoned for. However, Hilbert Lane and Red Oak Circle there now have buildings right in their backyard rather than condense it, go up another story, and the municipal parking lot is gone. So you gotta weigh, weigh in, you know, that's why I said case by case basis. What do we want? If we would have went up four stories on that, we would have got some nice amenities on that.
And a regional storm basin. We lost the regional storm basin.
And we lost the storm basin. So like I said, case by case, you really have to think about what you can do.
I, I gotta go to David.
So I, I'll bring it up for your consideration. Is it maybe part of the apprehension of apartment buildings is the current stock that we have in this village? Saxony Village is the only thing that is contemporary. Everything else in this village was built in what, the 60s and 70s? They have no amenities. They have none of the elements that other modern facilities are doing that are bringing in the young people. So I, I'm not opposed to the multifamily, knowing that developers are going to bring in something that's of quality today that is going to be an improvement to what we have. And maybe these type of buildings will stimulate our current developments to enhance, upgrade, improve their image as well.
Terry?
I was just going to pile on to what Trustee Miller said. When I was on the board and on the side of doing it, a taller building and getting all the amenities when Saxony Village was built. And there was such a mistake on our part to allow that to fail. And what happened was very typical. We had a couple of board members who got everybody irritated in the surrounding area talking about these skyscrapers going up at the, what, three, four story level. And we lost a fantastic development that would have created park space for us free of charge, parking, off-road parking for our mini entertainment district, free of charge, and a beautiful development that was condensed and nowhere near the borders of these other condominiums and apartments. We lost on that because some of us on the board said, wait a minute. People don't like this. Let's back off rather than saying what's best for the village. And I think that's something we've all been involved in in the last month here with people in the audience, our last, our last development on County Line Road that I support totally. There's always going to be opposition from the, from the immediate neighbors to anything we ever do. But we have to sometimes take off the hat and say, yes, we understand you're opposed to this, but for the future of the village, it must be done. And I think we have to all keep that in mind when we look at any development. And it hurts me when we say the 20 people who are here don't like it, therefore I support them. And we, we lose out then on the rest of all of our constituents in creating a better village for the future.
Further discussion comments? Okay. Well, I, I want to, great conversation, great discussion. Staff has a lot of feedback that they will take to go to the Plan Commission and then eventually to the Village Board. But I want to thank Director Reslaw for putting together a wonderful presentation. Hopefully, we've all learned a lot, and I think we've got, we know what the path forward is. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We are now on to item B, Status of Existing Village of Germantown Tax Increment Districts, TID, and the Village Center Financing Options. Steve?
We have with us this evening Phil Costin from Ellers, who has a presentation he's going through. I'll just, as a matter, for introduction, let me just make a couple of quick comments. One, we do still have the TID 10 process to complete at some point. We paused it, but at some point, we will need to bring that to closure one way or another. And then secondly, even though that decision isn't something that will, that the, the Plan Commission and Board will have to make for some time yet, the decisions that you do make in the, in the relatively near future about the type of development and the disposition of properties in the Village Center will impact what options are available to you for the TIDS. And that's why we thought it was appropriate to have Mr. Costin come in. And he has some scenarios he's going to run through. Those aren't the only scenarios, but will give you some ideas of how different decisions that you could make could affect the finances of the village.
Okay, great. Thank you. Phil Costin with Ellers. Nice to be back with you. Is this working? Excuse me. So a couple of purposes behind this presentation. I think first, as was just alluded to, we want to catch you up a little bit on the existing tax increment districts. I think there is probably some confusion around those and what the status of each of those are. And then once we're done with that, we've had a couple of chances to get together kind of internally and talk through different options that may be available for the Village Center area, including where we were headed at one point, and then some scenarios that we can look at besides just the, the full blown possible tax increment district. So with that, I'm going to kind of jump in and talk a little bit about each of the tax increment districts that are in existence as, as we stand today. So right now, the village has four tax increment districts that are in place. Just one footnote, because it's very important, is that this is a bit dated. And the reason it's dated is because on Friday of this week, the Department of Revenue is going to release new valuation numbers. So bad timing a little bit, but we'll have new numbers come Friday. They're preliminary numbers. Their final number is August 15th. And at that, what they will release on Friday is updated valuations for each of the tax increment districts throughout the state of Wisconsin. Valuations for each community, net new construction. A number of issues get released that are important, really important data points for each municipality in the state of Wisconsin. So we can quickly update this come Friday or early next week and send it back out just so you have more updated numbers of, on each of the tax increment districts. Keep in mind also that we do an annual report for the Joint Review Board. Typically, we have scheduled that, you know, November, December in the year. So we'll be updating the, the cash flows for each of the districts at that time as well. But in the interim, we will certainly make sure we get additional information to you. So TID number six was created 51914 as a mixed use district. And because it's a mixed use district, it has a maximum life of 20 years. So that's as long as it can stay open. It's a district that has seen a significant amount of new development over the last couple of years. Current incremental value, when I say incremental value, what I'm talking about is new developed taxes, taxable development once the district was created. So what value has been created out there since the district was created in 2014? A little over $55 million of value. And just a little quick on each one of these, I didn't provide a cash flow, but it does have a positive cash flow with a projected closure of 2032. And once a district closes out in 2032, that will impact budget year 2033. But in the meantime, the good news on TID number six is that no shortfalls anticipated in that district. It's self-supporting. It's paying its obligations off. And it'll close out a little bit earlier than the maximum life that's allowed, which in this case would be 2034 with collection in 2035. So a little bit earlier closure in TID number six, which is good news. TID number seven was created on 12/18/17 as an industrial district. GW Speaker was the initial reason for the creation of that tax increment district. Since that time, it's been expanded to pick up areas south of Holy Hill Road and some of the industrial development you're seeing south of Holy Hill Road. That also has been a very successful district. It's got a maximum life of 20 years. It's got $44 million of incremental value. Again, new taxes, new taxable development generated since it was created. That 44 million, we expect to jump due to some of the industrial buildings on the south side of Holy Hill Road that are wrapping up. So we expect to see a pretty good jump in valuation when we get those numbers on Friday. But here too, we have a positive cash flow, same timeframe that we think this will close out around 2032, budget year 2033, even though this district was created three years later. It'll have an earlier close or about the same timeframe. So again, a very successful district, it's meeting the obligations that are set forth. And we fully expect again to have a positive cash flow for the remaining life of that district. TID number eight, which was really originally created for Briggs and Stratton, and their expansion was created in 2018 as an industrial district. Again, the maximum life here is 20 years. It has a current incremental value of 200 million. So yes, there's a lot of development that has occurred, that continues to occur out there, but a very substantial amount of incremental value and already created out there of 200 million. There are some sites that are still being developed out there. We again, expect to see a bit of a bump in increment once the new valuations come out this Friday. Here too, very positive cash flow. Really difficult to accurately project when the closure will be because there are some expenditures still being made out there. This can stay open till 2041. If nothing else was done out there, this district probably could close out already in the next three to four years. So wildly successful tax increment district, doing very well. We expect it'll, it'll continue to do so going forward. Just a footnote on to date, the maximum we ever expected to see as far as new taxable development out there was 100 million. It's more than double that. So very substantial when you look at it in context of the entire village. Tax Increment District number nine was created on 6/6/22. Six, and as an industrial district, this is the properties that are adjacent to the new DPW building that have been built out. It's been expanded also. Over the last, over the, in the last year, we did do an amendment to this district to pick up areas directly to the west and north of the existing boundaries. This would be a 20-year TIF. As you can see out there, there's already a couple of large industrial buildings that have been built. Has a value of over 20. have been built, has a value of over 23, almost 24 million dollars. Here too, we expect to see a bit of a bump of incremental value to occur once the new values come out. Again, really early on in this district, we're, it's too hard to project at this point, but I could tell it's off to a great start. We do show a positive cash flow here as well. So, really all four districts are performing, existing districts are performing very well. The previous districts that were in place and have been closed out, all finished in the black. So, you have, don't have a history of creating districts that don't perform. I think there's been a lot of due diligence on each one of these before being created to make sure that conservative assumptions were used along the way to be able to make sure that we had positive outcomes in each one of these districts. There's a note at the bottom of this page that, that was provided by village staff. When TID six, seven, and eight, which again are the ones that we have a better handle on at this point because they're a little bit older district, have closed, the cumulative impact allowed to the village board to either increase spending on programs is about a half a million dollars. And that half a million isn't a one-time expenditure, it's actually resetting essentially the new baseline for budgeting in the village. Or it will decrease property taxes by about $454 on an, on an average home. So, typically what happens when you close out a TIF district is that the formula is a little bit complicated, but you get 50% of the closure will impact levy limits and have the ability to increase your, your levy going forward. And the rest, by statute, really is for tax relief. So, when you look at these numbers, it's not going to be one or the other. It's really, for the most part, going to be a bit of a combination of the two. There'll be some tax relief. At the same time, the village has a little bump in, under levy limits to be able to increase some spending along the way if, again, the board chooses to. It's totally up to you, at your discretion, whether or not you, you take the additional levy support. So, that's a relatively quick summary on the four districts that are all performing very well right now in the village and we expect, will continue to do so going forward because they're, they're all ahead of schedule in each case. Any questions on the districts? Again, I'll update these numbers, send them back out so you get a feel for what it, what's transpired over the last year. The numbers that are being released on Friday are really looking at what development occurred in 2024, not 25. These are 24 numbers valued now and will be part of the incremental value. So, 25 numbers are not contemplated as of August. Yes?
Thank you. Quick question. You mentioned that TID eight is doing very well and it could close in three years, I think you said, possibly, give or take. You don't have updated numbers, I understand. Let's just use three, three years. But in your staff note, you combined all three as if they were going the full 20 years, I'm thinking, or whatever. So, what would happen if indeed the TID eight closed in three years? What would, what would be, would you be able to extrapolate that or do we?
Not right offhand, I would guess probably that number that is used of the 400 and, second, 491 is it?
Yep.
I would, I'd say about, probably around two-thirds of that is related to tax increment district eight. Just when you look at the valuations, about two-thirds of it's TID number eight.
Okay, so two-thirds of the 491 and two-thirds of the 454.
Correct.
Correct?
Yeah, that's, that's the ballpark.
Right. Thank you very much.
Other questions on this before we move on? Okay.
All right, so village center options. Some of this, again, we haven't, I haven't been in front of the board or plan commission in a couple of months having this discussion. So, some of this is just level setting to make sure everybody kind of understands where we left off and what's transpired up to this point. And then from that, we kind of built out a couple of options for your consideration. And, and I, I agree with the village president, there are many options that could be looked at here. You know, we could, we could break, we could kind of slice and dice this and pick up one parcel here and one parcel there and it would look a little bit different. But this, these are the really four options that we thought were kind of logical for consideration when we talked through it. And I'll go through each one in a little more detail. So, option one is really to proceed with the creation of TID 10 as presented in February, the timeframe in February through April. We had, up to this point, we had a couple of meetings that have taken place. We had a joint review board initial of all the taxing bodies, we're all represented there, informational only to them. This did go in front of plan commission, they did hold a public hearing, and it was approved by plan commission, which is how it got to the village board and that's where things kind of stalled out. So, that, that's the process of where we are with the creation of tax increment district number 10. If the plant, project would move forward as it was presented, we could start right back up with the village board action because no significant change to the project plan means we don't have to go back to the joint review board for the initial meeting and we don't have to go to plan commission for a public hearing again. If there are substantial changes, you remove properties, you add properties, the density, the development, a lot of things change, then we would want to restart the process, go back in front of the joint review board for the initial meeting, hold a public hearing by plan commission, hold a public hearing, and then have it come back to the village board as a revised plan. So, that's just a reminder essentially of what's transpired, transpired up to this point. So, a reminder again, option one, we had three different phases that we were working under. The first phase was really the, what I'll call the flower source and Bailey's looking at me, I know there's some moving parts here. So, but the flower source was the primary development area. And then the second area and, and Ascension property. And then the second phase was really the BP, BMO properties. And then the third element, the third phase was really going to be south of Flower Source. And again, we didn't run a lot of numbers on that because we knew that, that was going to have to stand on its own at some point. But that's the area that was defined and it was really defined over three different phases. So, to accomplish that, we did need higher density residential really to offset the market plots and some of the retail commercial that was being proposed. And that's really what kind of came out of the numbers was to make sure that we had density and value enough to be able to offset those, those larger kind of village projects that you wanted to see in the subsequent phases. So, with that, that was option one, and that's really kind of the track we were heading down before things stalled out and we started having these more detailed discussions. Option two could be essentially the creation of TID number 10. And really what it would be is just looking at the Flower Source properties and developing that at this point. In this analysis, what I assumed was that the village would at some point sell the Ascension property, and we'll get back to that property in more detail in a little bit because there's some nuances there that, that we'll talk about. But it does, in my analysis that we, that I just put together and I'll show, go through in a little bit, it would have the village sell the Ascension property and not pursue the acquisition of the BP or BMO properties. And just say, at some point, maybe that comes forward and they want to, they want to pursue something and sell. But right now, option two would be, we'll let that kind of develop on its own over time. Maybe the village will interact with them and actually have kind of a discussion at a later point as to whether or not they, they have interest in selling. The TID would be amended in the future and future boards, again, if you wanted to pursue additional opportunities. So, keep in mind, in each of these scenarios, you can amend the boundaries up to four times. So, it's not a one-shot deal where we're going to draw boundaries and we're stuck with those boundaries for the life of the district. This is a redevelopment district, it can stay open for up to 27 years. And during that period of time, you have four different opportunities to amend the boundaries. So, it could be you create a district around the Flower Source and then in future decisions by board, you could look to add other parcels for future phases if you decided. So, that's an option that we looked at as well for option number two. Option two A really is the same except for, in this option, we really don't sell the Ascension property, rather we keep that available for future development and direct access to Mecklenburg Road. So, that would give you the access point to Mecklenburg Road, the ability at some point to bring infrastructure in off of Mecklenburg Road and, and kind of set yourself up for future redevelopment in that area. So, the same as option two, the Flower Source creation of the district, but in this case you retain the Ascension property, you create that and you keep that in the tax increment district and not, and ultimately not sell that property to a different user. Now, you may sell it to a developer in that scenario, but not just sell it outright to get out from underneath it. Okay, anybody okay with those first options? Option three is noted creation. We, in this scenario, we really look at the option of the village turning around and selling land to developer, a developer or developers. So, that would be the Flower Source property that you currently control and it would be the Ascension property. And you would then work with a developer to establish a plan to ultimately develop that area that you sold the land to. So, Flower Source property would be sold for development. What that would look like would really be dependent on the developer and what they brought forward. The goal here would obviously be to sell the Ascension parcel for potentially more than what you purchased it for. We had some discussions that probably a pretty good deal that was had on that property. There's a possibility of selling that for more than the purchase price. And there's also the ability to potentially extend the lease there, and we'll talk about that again in a little bit. This may require the village's debt levy to absorb some previously incurred costs, really starting in 2028. If property cannot be sold at a price high enough to recover some of the costs. So, and I'll talk about those numbers in a little bit. Again, you're not going to be creating a district in this option. So, really you're trying to sell the land to a developer for the most you can get for it. And then whatever is left over between what you have borrowed already and what you sold the land for would have to be absorbed into the general budget essentially. And I've run those numbers before, showed those to you, but I'll go through those again with you as well. So, under this scenario, you're out of the tax increment game and you are really looking at trying to sell as much property as you can to a developer to generate some development out there. Okay? Just a reminder, tiny numbers, what was borrowed? And you'll see at the bottom of this page, it says village center. And there's about six different items that were, that were borrowed either on a taxable or tax exempt basis a couple of months back. So, we had some TID planning costs that were absorbed in those borrowings. We had the Flower Source property one and two that were borrowed, the Ascension property that was borrowed, some closing costs, and then we borrowed some money for demolition of the greenhouses and such at the Flower Source. Those funds have been borrowed for those six different elements, they have been borrowed. A reminder that I was reminded about when we met is that not all those funds have been expended, there are a second payment due on the Flower Source and a second payment due to Ascension? No? Oh, Flower Source number two, that you hold, you, you borrowed that money, but those, those payments are due next year. So, but you control the property, you have borrowed the money for that, there's not additional costs that are necessary to, to be able to pay that. So, that's been borrowed up to this point. And it was borrowed a couple of months ago when we did 20, the 2025 A and 2025 B series general obligation notes, one was taxable, one was tax exempt. Again, a reminder what the, what was included and I highlighted in the yellow, the, the elements that are borrowed as part of the village center. So, in this case, 365,000 in village center planning expenses. That was part of the tax exempt issue because it's kind of a broad use purpose and it could be done on a tax exempt basis. The, of the taxable issue, 7.791 million in eligible village expenses included, including but not limited to land acquisition, demolition-related professional service costs, of which 5 million of that 7. roughly 8 million was for the Ascension property. Those are funds that have been borrowed already and are obligations now of the village. And either now you create a tax increment district to figure out a way to have enough development to support these costs or sell the property and whatever you can sell it for again would then become an expense of the entire village through your general levy. Okay? Everybody clear so far? One thing I, I will note in, in each of these borrowings, it's customary for us to structure the debt in a way that doesn't impact you for a couple of years. And that's normal because if you think about how TIF works and taxation works in the state of Wisconsin, if something builds in 2025, it's valued in '26 and the first time you see revenue is '27. Okay, so you have this two-year lag. You borrowed this money in '25. The best-case scenario is 2027 you would see revenue, likely '28 by the time you see revenue. So, you'll see here, what we ended up doing is we had a three-year delay in principal on the first issue to account for that delay that we knew was going to happen. And then we also had a four-year delay in principal on the taxable. Now, there are interest payments due, we did borrow some interest to be able to pay that, but the principal, the majority of the debt payments really aren't going to kick in until '28, '29. So, you have a little bit of time to kind of work through some of the issues. But if you are going to create a tax increment district, sooner the better because it starts generating revenue right away and you have the ability to start making debt service payments right away. Okay? So, we have a little room built into the borrowings just to make sure that, again, we accounted for that two-year lag in, in when you actually start receiving revenue. So, we did a financial summary and a risk section for each of the options. This doesn't, again, this option one really ties back directly to what was presented in the project plan and the direction that we were heading back in March of 2025. So, again, just a couple of key points, again, this was looking at phase one and phase two only. We were going to include phase three area in the TID plan, but our analysis did not include, include costs related to TID three or potential development. So, the preliminary estimates in the draft project plan require 85 million in new taxable development created by 2032. So, we had a build-out schedule that was, that was prepared and presented as part of the project plan that generated revenue to start paying back to debt service for those two different general obliga, general obligation notes that have been borrowed up to this point. So, to achieve 85 million in taxable development, significant residential density, given the, just the acreage there would be needed. And the original financial model showed 300 units of residential on the Flower Source properties, 90 units of residential on the Ascension property. on the flower source properties, ninety units of residential on the Ascension property, forty eight units of residential on the BMO property. And, um, again, that level of development was really, would be sufficient then to help offset some of the commercial and market plots area. So high density, generating enough increment to help offset commercial and the community kind of, uh, benefit being the market plots area. The amount of new taxable development could be reduced if the village receives grants uh, and or has developer purchased land and paid for the infrastruts, infrastructure to serve that area. And that's something we've talked about is, I don't want to say this is worst case because there's always the worst case. Well, that are worse than you could think of, but, uh, it's, it's very conservative. The, the bottom line is if you went out to talk to different developers, uh, you got to ask them to come back and say, what can you develop? What's the timing? What's the value? And what are you going to purchase the land for? And are you willing to put the infrastructure in and see where that goes? This assumes, this analysis assumes that you're going to sell the, the property for a dollar uh, to the different developers. Uh, we actually had a dollar amount in there, some land sale, uh, in there. And that the infrastructure is going to have to be put in, uh, by the village and not by the developer. So that's, that's part of the negotiation with the developer as to where that would have went. Uh, so some of these, some of the, uh, overall costs and, and development needs, um, uh, could be reduced potentially if, depending on how the negotiations go with the developers. Again, as I've said before, phase three would need to stand on its own, receive right, um, revenues generated from phase three would need to offset any costs, uh, related to that development. So there's risks always. Uh, taxable development needed to support the existing debt and future project costs aren't met due to market conditions or political will. Uh, that's a reality. Uh, market conditions can certainly change. Um, we could have a developer start a project and they think the market is there and maybe it's not at the level they thought it would be. Or, um, you know, you could have a, a change over in your board and the board could come back and say, first proposal is great. We don't want to take it beyond that. Political will is part of this, uh, risk factors, uh, all the time. Another risk factor I didn't put in here, I probably should have, is what's going to happen with interest rates, what's going to happen with overall tax rates? Uh, and what's going to happen with property values once property are, are built? Uh, we've made assumptions along this that we think are very conservative, but again, uh, those are all risk factors that we and you really don't control where interest rates are going. Um, you know, what happens with the overall tax rate, you're just one piece of it. It's the school, it's the county, it's the technical college, we're all part of that as well. So there's a number of risk factors that you really have very little control over. And, um, another risk factor, if you recall, we did also identify that there would go to be a need for some grants or non-tid revenue uh, to essentially offset some of those costs that we had talked about. What that looks like would really be dependent upon what you negotiated with the developer. But we did look at a couple of options, including potentially revenue sharing from another positive district to help support this. So there's a, there was kind of an embedded potential shortfall already at these levels of development. And that's a risk, uh, that you may or may not want to revenue share from another district. Maybe you don't secure grants. There's a, a variety of different options. There are different risks that are there. And then another risk is BPN or BM, uh, BMO do, doesn't, uh, sell, leaving the market plots and commercial development not viable. That's certainly an option, or maybe they're delayed longer than, um, you know, maybe they're delayed five, ten years, and at that point, the market has totally changed. Uh, so that's another risk factor I see is, you know, kind of the continued negotiations uh, with BP and BMO and whether or not, um, you know, they're going to be willing sellers in the near future with the ability to essentially create that market plots that everybody would like to see. Questions on option one before I leave that? Uh, option one was status quo. We move on with the tip district as proposed. Um, and, um, uh, again, it'll require higher density than, you know, the density levels that we've been talking about through the process. Hearing none? All right, option two and two A, uh, again, the only difference in two and two A are uh, in one, in two, you're selling the Ascension property and two A, you're, you're retaining the Ascension property. So again, I ran an analysis, um, based on a couple of different scenarios and a couple of different options. So existing costs of three and a half million, again, for phase. Option two is just looking at the flower source now. Uh, two point four million in land acquisition for the flower source, a hundred thousand demolition, four hundred thousand professional service. At six hundred thousand in closing costs, you end up with about three and a half million dollars. Uh, that are costs that have to be, uh, paid back on a new development. Uh, if you just look at the flower source and you sell the Ascension property. What that'll require is around seventeen point five million in new taxable development over the next five years to offset that three and a half million dollars. So if you think about each multifamily unit or townhouse or whatever you want to, however you want to frame it, at about a hundred and seventy five thousand a unit, which is ballpark for this area, we're talking a hundred units. To be able to support on the flower source property, just and pay everything back that's associated and tied back to that project and to that, to that property. So that's option two. Uh, option two A, uh, if the Ascension parcel was retained, again, just to offset that Ascension property of five million, you would need another twenty million in taxable development. So pretty substantial, uh, in that case of what you would need. The risk here again, Ascension property isn't sold for five million. That would add to the existing costs and I think the very similar risk items that I had talked about in option one are here also. Uh, you know, is the market conditions going to hold? Um, is there political will to do the projects? Uh, and then kind of what happens with some of the assumptions that I talked about earlier? Interest rates, uh, tax rates, all those kinds of things are, are all key items that would have to be, uh, analyzed. If there is a shortfall under this and you don't generate enough increment, then again, whatever's left falls on the levy. And, and there's a tax consequence in doing that as well. Option three, uh, is really looking at noted being created. We can go a lot, a lot of different directions with this, uh, so I tried to summarize it on one page. I probably could have gone on a little bit more, but existing costs, again, I talked about before. Uh, about three point five million. This again assumes that you're going to sell the Ascension property. Uh, anything short of that would add to that three and a half million dollars. The village will need to sell a flower source property, offset some costs and absorb the remaining costs in the annual debt service. And then I prepared three different options for your consideration. One, you sell no properties. Just say you turn around and you have to provide the developer with the property for a dollar to get the development you're looking for. In that case, uh, the average impact and the average property owner is about sixty dollars a, a year uh, for that twenty-year term of the debt. So pretty simple math, well, twelve hundred dollars uh, over the life of the debt that would have to be picked up and absorbed by the taxpayers, uh, of the village. Uh, the second option is sell the Ascension property. The annual impact on that would be about thirty six dollars per year. And then if you're able to sell the Ascension property in the flower source, I use two million. It's about twenty eight dollars per year for the twenty-year period. So obviously, selling property under this scenario to a developer uh, drives down the impact to the overall taxpayer uh, over time. So a couple of closing thoughts, uh, from on my end, uh, for consideration as well, I, I, I think Jeff did a great job walking through, um, you know, kind of the growth numbers that have occurred, uh, in, in Germantown. And one thing I wanted to just point out is that under levy limits, uh, the only way a community can increase their operating budget is to offset uh, inflationary cost increases through development, net new construction. You need net new construction to be able to meet your inflationary cost increases i- in a municipal budget. So you do need growth. Uh, if you're going to stay stagnant and no growth, uh, what that's going to do is going to really force you to make some cuts in services uh, to stay under, uh, the restrictions of, under levy limits. In the last couple of years, your net new construction growth primarily, not entirely, have really come from your tax increment districts. Really look at what's happened to today. Today, six to lesser extent, seven, uh, have really driven that net new construction number, which has allowed you some increases, uh, in your operating budget over the last couple of years. That's going to slow, certainly in six, seven and eight. Uh, we might see some more growth in nine. So some additional growth is going to continue to be needed for you to be, just meet your inflationary increases that everybody sees in their annual budget. So that's going to be an important element. And then finally, just on the Ascension, the current lease is a triple net lease. So Ascension is paying the village approximately four hundred twenty five thousand per year through twenty twenty eight with the ability to extend the lease for up to five more years. Three to five years, I think, is what's been discussed. So you're getting rent from Ascension of four hundred twenty five thousand a year that does help offset that cost of the acquisition. And during this time, they are also paying a tax bill yet. And that tax bill number, you can see what they're paying to each of the taxing districts, uh, in the last year's tax bill. Uh, for the village of Germantown, another thirty thousand to the school district, about forty two thousand. So they are, it's still a taxable property, still paying taxes. Uh, and you're, and they're paying a lease back to the village. So for a period of time, the Ascension property really isn't, um, creating any hardship. It's, it's more where do you go with the flower source property? That doesn't have another r- revenue source coming back to the village, like a lease. And you have to figure out what you want to do with the flower source property, at least at a minimum, uh, going forward.
A lot to unpack there. Thank you very much. A lot of information. And we just wanted to, uh, share this information again. I'm sure you've seen option one, but you haven't seen all the other different options. Um, and I guess it really doesn't matter because we do have a board mandate. The board, the board voted on going the next step. And that's where our next speaker will come in, Bailey Copeland, to talk about the RFP process. So, but again, this is excellent information. Do we have any questions for Phil? David?
Uh, yeah, Phil, you had said a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars per unit. And, uh, Bailey, correct me if I'm wrong, developers were talking about three hundred units on the flower source? Okay, so that brings me up to like fifty two million dollars worth of development. You said to cover, uh, phase one and phase two, we needed seventeen million dollars and another twenty seven million dollars?
Need about eighty five million total.
Eighty five million? Where did I get the eighty five from the seventeen and twenty? I'm, I'm, I got lost there. That's why I'm trying to.
The, uh, the flower source, the option two is what I was talking about, the, the hundred units at a hundred seventy five thousand. That's just on the flower source property. What's needed for you to pay back the flower source property?
Okay.
Removing BP, removing BMO and Ascension.
Okay.
Uh, from that. So the rest would come from the other, the other areas.
So a hundred, a hundred units at a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars a unit is seventeen point five million dollars.
Yep.
Okay, so there's where I got the seventeen point five. You also used the number of about twenty million dollars we needed if we did something else.
Yeah, if you sold, uh, in option two A, if you retain the Ascension property and didn't sell that.
Mm-hmm.
And you wanted to ultimately tear that down for development, you would need another twenty million in development there to support that project cost.
Or if you can build forty million dollars worth of development on the flower source.
Yeah.
And that's where I, that's where I'm going with the three hundred units, which is what developers have been talking about. At a hundred and seventy five, you can get all your increment that's needed just on the flower source and you can then still hold on to Ascension and still pick up BMO and um, BP.
Yeah, and those are additional costs that have not been, yeah.
Yeah, but you could, the flower source development at a full build-out could cover phase one and phase two.
Could cover phase one, flower source and the Ascension property, not the BMO and BP property.
Those would be a little bit more.
Yeah.
Just to acquire them.
Just to acquire demo, clean up.
Mm-hmm.
And build the, the next facility there, yeah.
Yeah, but we have, we have some numbers for that that we can discuss. Eighty five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Phase one. Acquisition. All of the infrastructure. Ascension cons, market plots.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Kristen?
Yep, so it looks like so far our tids have done well, but if tid ten were to unfortunately fall short, um, would the taxpayers be responsible for that and what kind of costs would they be looking at potentially?
Oh, um, well, that, that's what I'm trying to get to with the, the option three analysis that I showed before.
Right.
So essentially what happens, um, it just say you, you went option one and, and, uh, you, you got two thirds or three quarters of the development needed to support all the costs in, in phase one and phase two. That if there is a, typically what will happen is you'll have debt service payments. You'll borrow the money for infrastructure, acquisition of property, cleanup, that kind of stuff. If there's a shortfall, um, that, and there isn't enough increment to pay the full amount of the debt service, the remaining amount could be paid for from a number of sources. One, you could, in the short term, you could look at borrowing money from, if, advancing money from other sources of the village. Maybe the water utility, sewer utility, whatever, for a period of time. And then have that paid back from future increment. That'd be one option. Another option is you could always use your fund balance, um, for a period of time to absorb that cost. There's some risk in doing that, being a rated, highly rated community. And then the third could be that you could just levy the difference and just say, we're going to have a shortfall paid by the, by all the taxpayers, uh, on, in your budget. And so that, those are the options that you would really look at.
Okay.
Yeah, the fourth option I looked at was you could share revenue from another successful district to offset that cost as well. And I was looking at today as a, a logical potential, uh, you know, a source of funding that could, uh, support, um, a project like the, the market plots downtown, creating a downtown.
But that would delay the closure.
That would delay the closure.
Right.
Yep.
Gotcha.
Thank you. And I just have one other question too. I know we can't predict market conditions or anything, but would you say that there's certain economies or markets where a tid is riskier than other situations?
I think it depends on what's being developed. Um, you know, uh, these days, um, the, been doing this a long time. I would say, you know, twenty years ago, uh, it was rare to have any housing. Um, and a lot, a lot of times you couldn't create housing in a tax increment district. The law changed a number of years back. It's more, uh, it's easier to do now. Um, there's provisions that allow for it. Um, I would say that, uh, commercial development is challenging these days. Um, you can just kind of drive around and see a lot of vacant storefronts everywhere. Doesn't matter if you're in Germantown or Sussex or wherever else, there, there's, there's vacancies. So I think commercial, commercial development is, is a challenge. Uh, some industrial developments challenge as well, just to get a, a valuation that's meaningful. Uh, I give a lot of examples of where, uh, uh, industrial development came in and they spent eighty million dollars on a building and it valued out at fifteen million, uh, taxable. So happens all the time and we don't quite understand how that happens at the DOR, but it does. Um, so I, you know, I, I can't really pinpoint when's a risk. So, you know, I can't really pinpoint when's a risky time. I think in a situation like this, you have a project in a kind of a downtown, if you will, kind of creating a little downtown area that, you know, I'll leave it up to the development experts as to what they see in the marketplace. But there's no question that housing, of all types of housing, is still in high demand. There's shortages pretty much all through Wisconsin, at certain price points especially. So I think there's room for additional housing in Germantown. And I think that bore out with some of the numbers. The commercial components might be a little more of a challenge.
Okay. Thank you.
Russ?
So for option 1, obviously, it sounds like the big question for me is Phase 2. If Phase 2 can happen, do we know what the likelihood of procuring BMO and BP is?
I'll leave that up to, when Bailey comes up, she'll, she's a communication with them, I'm not. So I think she can answer that better than I can.
Okay.
Jen?
Phil, you said there are other scenarios that obviously you didn't have room to put in here. So one of them that I was thinking of that, to me, is pretty obvious is sell the flower source, keep the Ascension, because we're actually getting revenue stream in two ways. And they seem amiable to that. And so is that something that you can model?
Certainly can. The question will be, what can you sell the land for, the flower source land? That would be the, you know, the question. I can model out different numbers. And that option 3 that I ran through, it did assume that, in that case, you're going to sell Ascension different than what you just referenced, and flower source for $2 million. I think you bought it for 2.4, roughly, 2.4. So you sell it for that. And there's still a little bit of a gap. And that's why that number on an annual basis, what the impact of the taxpayer is pretty low in that scenario. But yeah, we could model it out. It's just, we have to take an assumption of where you can sell the flower source for.
Of course. Thank you.
And the purpose for this discussion is not to make a decision. We're not. It's just to have what options are available. The reason why Ascension has been on there is because we hear that they want to stay. And if they want to stay, well, let's create the opportunity for them to stay. And we've incurred costs thus far for a Village Center. And the goal, my goal is to, at a minimum, recover those costs. And if we sell the property for more than the $5 million with an extended lease, by all means, we can recover the $360,000 plus or minus that we've incurred thus far on Village Center. So again, the purpose is just to create different options available, to get the thoughts going. But again, the board does have a, there's a board motion that stipulated that we engage Bailey, and she's going to have a wonderful presentation on appropriate next steps, which will more than likely include an RFP. And then it will come back to this body in terms of what options are available. What do you want to do with it? So, Terry?
Well, at that point, I probably don't want to talk about this too much, knowing it's coming back. But I am a supporter of not allowing this to happen piecemeal, because then you're going to get something that looks piecemeal, that we have to really think this thing through, so we don't have another Saxony Village Times Squared, you know, right in the heart of the village. The more control we can keep on all of these properties as a village with a TID district, the better off we're going to be. That's just my opinion.
Further discussion, comments before we move on. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We are now on to item C, Village Center Property Redevelopment, Future Direction Process, Responsibilities, and Timeline for Creating Zoning Regulations and Proposal Guidelines. Administrator Krecklow.
For this item, we have Bailey Copeland, who has put together a presentation and will walk through the recommendations from her, as well as from Director Redzla and myself.
Thank you, Administrator Krecklow. Good evening. At your July 7 meeting, you asked that I present the next steps options for the Village Center, specifically what the process could look like and how to proceed with the RFP. At that meeting, it was also requested that I work with the village staff to return with a detailed recommendation on what we believe would be the most effective and efficient process for the village. This is what we will be presenting to you tonight, a clear outline of the redevelopment process and decision points ahead, and how we can move forward thoughtfully and strategically. The purpose of the process is to create a strategic, community-supported roadmap for revitalizing the Village Center. This includes aligning zoning and financial tools, engaging with the community, and preparing a clear path to attract a qualified development partner. After further discussion with staff, we believe that adopting the zoning first is in the village's best interest. It strengthens the village's position financially and strategically, and helps ensure that any future development aligns closely with both the community priorities and village goals. By clearly defining the framework upfront, we can attract proposals that are better aligned with our expectations and avoid delays and misunderstandings later in the process. We've established a tentative schedule for critical meetings and deliverables, starting with tonight's decision and process moving forward towards zoning and RFP released earlier this fall, or early this fall. These meetings are intended to confirm priorities and keep us on track. Today, we want to focus on establishing the order process and open the floor for discussion. We'll be reviewing an overall timeline and identifying the key remaining steps. A few questions we'd like feedback on. Is the board comfortable with the process proposed? Is it aggressive, as previously requested, but also flexible if adjustments are needed? Does a board support the proposed flow, starting with a planning commission, and then moving forward with the village board? Earlier this evening, we heard from Phil Kassen with Aylers, who provided an overview of the financing tools and strategies that could support the Village Center redevelopment. That presentation set an important foundation for tonight's discussion by outlining how financial considerations interact with the planning goals. Which brings us to today and the next steps. The next step is meeting with the planning commission to begin formal review of the new zoning district. This picks up where the process left off last March. When Von Bresen and Roper, at this meeting, will focus on aligning zoning with the village goals, reviewing the previous planning presentation, gathering input from the community and the commissioners. Rinca will also introduce a visual preference survey to help illustrate and collect feedback on key zoning elements to better understand how these elements could look and feel in the Village Center. The next step in the process is to focus on community engagement. On August 25, the planning commission will hold a session presented by Rinca, featuring a visual preference survey designed to gather input from both the community and the commissioners. The survey is outlined to open up online for additional week after the meeting to encourage broader participation. If the board chooses to extend that window further, we should be, we could keep it open longer. However, it will impact the future meetings. Next, Von Bresen and Rinca will work with staff and refine, finalize the zoning framework, incorporating feedback from the planning commission and community input gathered at the previous meetings. At this stage, the planning commission will have the opportunity to make a formal recommendation to the village board for adoption of the new zoning district. If the planning commission takes action at the prior meetings to recommend adoption, the village board would then be in a position to review and discuss the proposed zoning ordinance and take formal action on the adoption. If the zoning is approved, the next steps in the redevelopment process include the issuance of the RFP and subsequent milestones would clearly be outlined to the board at that time. Which brings us back to Phil's discussion tonight. By this point in the process, we'll have the benefit of additional context from the planning commission's work and the community engagement, which will help refine the financial decisions. Phil will be able to revisit the available financing tools and strategy, this time with a clearer picture of the village's zoning direction, density preferences, and development goals. The focus of the discussion will be aligned, will be on aligning the financial framework with those goals and determining whether the creation of a TID is necessary to support the project feasibility and achieve the desired outcomes. So here is all of those steps in one calendar, which can be tweaked one way or another if the boards feel like it needs to be more meetings, less meetings. But this is probably the most aggressive schedule that you're able to fit in with working with staff and what they feel would be viable. So now we're going to go through the process and the timeline in detail. I'd like to open up the floor for discussion. Our goal is to answer any questions you may have and to confirm or adjust the process and dates needed. We want to ensure the flow of the process meets your expectations and to hear if there are any additional or different community engagement approaches you'd like to see incorporated.
Open up for discussion. Thank you, Bailey. David?
I'll start off with doing a little backtracking to Phil's presentation. If we sell this property, if we sell everything to just recoup our money and pay off our $360,000 bill that we have, a developer's going to come forward anyway. They're going to bring forward the flower source. They're going to decide what they want to build, how they want to do it in their format. We're going to rely on the plan commission to say, is that acceptable or not? The way that it's being tried to be doing it is for us, the plan commission and the village board, to have the direction now and mandate what gets built there. We want this plan built. We want these guidelines followed. We want this, we want this, we want this. Or we don't allow you to be our developer. So while wanting to sell the property may be an option, I think it leaves us in a worse state, because you're not going to get what you want. We're not going to get what we have envisioned, what the community is going to envision, because there are going to be more community involvement meetings, as has been stated here. Until you bring a developer to the table, there's still a lot of unknowns out there. We have conceptual plans from two different people. We got financial information. It doesn't have final information on it. We have to get farther down the road before we can finalize the decisions. But we have to take that leap of faith that we are going to get what we want by being part of the team. That is how we started this. That is why we started it with Gray Wolf, is because they needed us to gear, drive some of this and help them out. That's why we're here today. Unfortunately, Gray Wolf is not, but we still are. So how many meetings do you want to have? How much residential input that can be discussed to get as much as you want? I understand what some of the residents want, is they want to have sit-down charrettes. I'm not sure if that is being proposed, but more meetings to hear from what the residents have to say. It worked well with the 2050 plan, that we had that online thing, and people could communicate through that and see what they liked and didn't like. That worked well for me. I could see what people wanted. I could communicate with them. So I'm happy that we have some type of framework in front of us for us to continue discussing and move this forward.
Thank you. And, you know, we sat down over the last, I don't know, two or three weeks on this timeline. And I feel comfortable with this timeline. I think it's attainable. And getting back to your comment about selling the land on option 3, not unlike what we're talking about, that will come through the plan commission and the Grossnick property, doing an RFP for the Grossnick property. We could certainly do on option 3, an RFP for this as well. And to your point, David, this is what we want. Whether it's option 1, 2, or 3, it's got to be one of the options. Something will happen at the flower source property. We all know that. And we will control that. I agree. And if it's part of a TID, it's part of a TID. If it's part of option 3, where we don't have to do a TID, I think that's attainable as well. So, further conversation. Bridget?
Overall, I like that you've laid this all out for us. I do think that an August 25 date for a public input session would not be a very great idea. As a parent of an elementary school age kid, the week before school starts is absolute chaos. We'd be taking that opportunity from a big chunk of our population.
Good, good point. Kristen?
I was actually going to say the same thing, that it is the start of the school year, but it's also the week before, the Monday before Labor Day. I feel like if kids aren't in school yet, they're taking a final trip. Parents aren't as engaged in the community. I feel like if they miss this meeting tonight, they might not even be aware of this potential August 25 meeting. And leaving it open for just an additional week is exactly on Labor Day. So I feel like we would at least need like an extension on that.
And that one's flexible. Whether it's one week, two weeks, it just, we have to look to see how the meeting dates line up.
Yeah. And I think making sure that we're fully engaging the community, making sure that they have the awareness of the meeting dates, what they can do, how they can participate this time is really important, too.
Further discussion. Jen?
I agree with Kristen. We need to push it back. This is a crazy time. It's the end of summer. People are on vacation. School's starting. I would push that August 25 out a month. And if you don't do your due diligence and get the word out, Facebook next door, emails on our trends webpage, you're not doing this a service. And if you do not call it a neighborhood meeting, that was a big fallout with the other development that was just passed, Sutton Farms. I think we're not planning this properly. We have to give our residents time to give feedback. And I think it's our due diligence. Thank you.
Further comments. Bob?
I think option 3 is a bailout. And all the time we've invested to this point, if we sell these properties off, we lose control. We're not going to get what we want to see there. So I just, you know, why did we do this to begin with? There's no control. They'll follow our zoning. But what I'd like to see is we get this zoning figured out before we move forward. I think that's what's proposed in the timeline here. And then whether it's 1 or 2, kind of impartial to that. But certainly, I think 3 is just kind of defeats many months, if not years, of trying to get to this point.
Further discussion. Russ?
Go back to my question from earlier that was directed, actually being answered here.
Yeah. So I am still in conversations, as late as this past Thursday, with the BMO owner. That's a continuing conversation on a day-to-day, every-other-day basis. And I was also talking with the owner of the BMO as early as last week, that it's still a continued conversation and negotiation.
Yeah, I think just from a process standpoint, right, and why everyone's here, Phase 2 is what the village has asked for, and Phase 1 is a mean to get there. But without a clear and concise path to Phase 2, and I think that's the process you work through, right? That's where my apprehension lies, and I think where a lot of apprehension lies in this village, and especially if we're going to assign a TID to it simultaneously. So now we're layering kind of, heck no, we're layering issues on top of each other. So as much clarity as you can present... So as much clarity as you can present in regards to that, it's going to only behoove the, or push the conversation forward, specifically if we're going to start talking about continuing with the TID to finance this. Um, I know there's a lot of numbers in there, and David's talked about some of them, but in the end, option one still required a shortfall with either grants or potential borrowing from other TIDs to cover that, that money. Am I wrong in that understanding?
But again, that's a, it is true, but it, there's conservative, you know, so one of the number and the assumption in there is a joint retention pond is, would be on the Flower Source for the entire corner. So that would assume the village has 100% financial obligation to that. That might not happen. I mean, most likely, the developer of the Flower Source will pay for their part of it. The village might pay for some additional for the other, other corner. But again, it's kind of a very conservative worst case that the village would pay for all the infrastructure. So the offset of, you know, that shortfall might not even exist. And so, you know, if we get going through the RFP process, we will understand what the, in phase one with the Flower Source, you know, how many units will be there, what infrastructure will they pay for, what are they going to ask for from the village? Those are all key components. Right now, we're just making assumptions, but once we get through that RFP process, we will have a lot more of those answers, and that's why we're proposing to come back to this board once we have more of those answers.
And, and that was the risk associated with having the conversation about the different options before we, we, before we did the, the zoning change and the RFP. The reason why we had the different options out there, just so that they're out there for consideration in terms of what will eventually come down the pike, um, with the RFP, RFP process.
Minister Brecklow.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, first of all, I thought Mr. Ewer's question is really a good one, and there are a lot of unknowns out there, and, and the biggest are really the future of the BP and the BMO properties and, and what might happen with those. But to kind of emphasize, the thing that this process does as it's laid out is it allows you to move forward, um, to make some of the decisions, uh, without having to know all of the, all of the, the end of, the end of the situation, uh, answers. So I think the first thing that you would be dealing with is the zoning. And, you know, now you have information and all kinds of information from the, the, the meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, um, from this meeting on the finances, um, and the types of impacts that those things might have. But now if you go forward with the rezoning, um, and kind of determine what level of density is acceptable, um, how high of buildings are acceptable, uh, and those are kind of value-based decisions that, you know, you two bodies are going to have to make. I think then after that, that information gets built into one of two things, either an RFP for a developer or, uh, or a request for proposals to purchase the land. Um, and, and to some extent, those can be one, one of the same thing. I, I mean, there's, it's just sort of how much information are you asking for? Because ultimately, with an RFP process, we're looking to sell that land to the developer, um, and, and in a sale, you're going to want information about what their plans are to do for the land. So it's, it, it, it isn't really, it might to some extent be a distinction without a difference. Um, but the key is really that next step of rezoning and determining what is it that the community wants? What is it that you two, two bodies are, uh, would like to see, um, in that area?
Further discussion. David.
Can, Bailey, can we confirm that residents going in and talking to BMO Harris or going in and talking to people at BP is pointless because you're not talking to the people that you are talking to?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the BMO property is controlled by a, a trust out of California, and, um, I'm not gonna, there, there's, um, the, for that to happen, there's, there's certain things that have to happen on the trust side of it from some family members in order for the land to be sold. Uh, there's a, a timeline associated with that, so. And I would agree with you, David, that going in to talk to the bank, talking to the gas station is, is fruitless, so.
And there's layers upon, I mean, there's multiple layers on the owner of, of the BMO.
Correct.
That I've been talking with.
Correct. Uh, Russ?
Um, just procurement of those two properties, what would that look like if they are unwilling participants in it? Is there still a path forward for the village? What would that be? Is that something that's even entertainable? And that's not me asking or pushing for that scenario. I'm just wondering what that looks like beyond, you want to sell, we want to buy.
Um, that's really a question for the village attorney who, um, I didn't ask to be here tonight, uh, in hindsight, probably should have had him at least on the line, but, uh, but I, I will take a stab at answering it. While it's not impossible to acquire, uh, properties for development without a, a willing seller, um, that is, that, that process has gotten more complicated as time has gone by, and I think it would be a very long and difficult process for the village to acquire those properties without a willing seller.
Which is why we put in terms of option one from a risk standpoint, the, the likelihood, probability of even phase two even occurring, so.
David.
However, both of those people are in communication with us and are talking the process through with us.
Yes.
So that we're still working with them.
That is correct.
So they are moving forward with us.
Further discussion. Trustee Jan Miller.
Uh, just a quick point. Uh, we do own the property. Uh, we do have the plan commission that is in charge of all the development, and you have to approve anything that comes forward. So I, I, I think that that developing without a TID, you're the failsafe, uh, committee, commission, I should say, um, that, that this village has, and getting resident input is really important.
Yeah, a, and again, that, that's a risk associated with putting this discussion at this time. This discussion referencing different options will be two, three months down the road. But again, the purpose of having the conversation was so that you're thinking about it in terms of what path we can go down, so. But that will happen two to three months down the road. I think what we want to do is kind of finalize based on the discussions here in terms of the timeline. I think we're all in agreement that, um, uh, we need to do the zoning changes. Um, we've got a board meeting coming up, uh, August 4th. Maybe we could have an updated, um, process schedule to share with the board to give a thumbs up, change this, change that, so that Bailey knows exactly what we need to do, so.
I think the most important date is the August 11th date, because the community outreach would be past that anyways. So in preparation for Rinca and in the parties involved, are you okay with continuing to have the August 11th planning commission date and the process of planning commission and vill, community engagement and then village board?
I'm okay with that because I think we're all aligned in terms of something will happen there. We've been talking about this for months and months. We just don't know what's going to happen. And when we engage the community, we're going to get additional input in terms of what's desired, what's not desired. So I'm okay with that, so. Thoughts? David?
Um, what, when do you, when would you like to have a determination of height and density? Is that something you would like sooner rather than later? So these developers, you can go out to them and say, okay, we can do this and this, and then they can, we can decide who's going to be?
I think to have some general parameters for, i- if you go out to a developer and don't have zoning in place and don't have general, um, parameters, you're, it's really going to be able, it's going to be difficult to determine, you know, the difference between them. What is the best for the village? If someone comes with 10 single-family houses, first 400 units, financially, that's, that's a, a big gap. And so it's, if you have some general parameters of going, we want between, you know, this number of units and this number of units in order to have the financials work for the market plots, that's a, that makes sense.
So you don't need that answer in two weeks? You need it in September, September 8th, according to the schedule?
Correct.
Okay, so we got time to make that decision.
Yeah, and same with the height. I mean, the height and the density go, go hand in hand. And to your point, you know, some people will have parking on the first floor, so there'll be four units above or three. It's, so there's just a lot of moving pieces, but to have some guidance of where these developers are able to come in with their proposals is, is going to be the best outcome for the village.
Further, Meg.
Um, just to follow up and touch on Russ's comment as far as other options, I will not be on board for eminent domain, so I'm just letting you know.
I don't know if we've settled it or not, but the idea of moving this structure out as Jan brought up, I can see some merit to that, but on the other hand, it destroys the momentum we started tonight. If we move that out another month, and then at the other end, so we get away from starting school, then we end up at Thanksgiving at the other end. So, uh, I don't know that there's a good time. I think we've got a plan here. I think we need to stick with it. I see positives and negatives about it, but I think it's the plan.
Okay, further comments. Ken.
Um, I, I think with respect to, uh, people that have already spoken on the board that need to push it out, I think we should respect that and just go forward with that. And I also wanted to make a comment about having a TID for residential would be setting precedence in this village. Just saying.
Okay, we're not even at that conversation yet, but thank you. Bridget.
Uh, could we have that public engagement off of a plan commission schedule? Uh, does it have to follow our traditional plan commission every other week?
It, it doesn't necessarily have to, to follow the, the plan commission schedule that we've, we've laid out, and that's something I think we'll, taking the feedback that we heard tonight, we'll look at some options and, and bring that to the board on, on Monday. Um, you know, we have had, uh, for other development projects, for other, other issues, uh, we've had public hearings on other nights, other than Monday nights, and, you know, we can look at some of those alternatives as well. Obviously, we're going to need to make sure that we've got, um, you know, all the people who need to be there are going to be able to be there, uh, but, uh, those are some things we can work out. We'll look at, we'll look at all the different alternatives.
Yeah, Josh.
Probably for the board to decide, but we've had it where we've done text message or on the village website style surveys. Is that something that can be done in the interim between the meetings? So that by the next time we have a meeting, it's, uh, who did it last time? Was it Rinca? Where they're spitting up the bubbles of the live?
That was done by, uh, Grave, and it was their online, what's that, Jeff, what's that online system called? Social pinpoint?
Could that be something that would be done ahead of the meeting? So by the next meeting, we've got 500 answers, 3,000 answers?
You can have that conversation to see what, what capabilities and what, how they can frame it.
There has been discussion about doing a, a broad community survey, so.
I think it'd just help to expedite it.
Yep, agreed.
Further comments. Kristen.
Um, who would be responsible for writing the questions for the survey? And then would somebody else be like double-checking it or okaying it or anything? Would it go through a bo, a board or anything?
Yeah, we're not there yet. But I would say we would, uh, Minister Brecklow would accept any and all feedback for questions, so.
Social, social pinpoint allowed you to put whatever comment you wanted on a drawing.
Okay.
So it was a, you could say whatever you want. You didn't have to wait for a question.
Further comments. Okay, I think, uh, Bailey, you've got your marching orders. A wonderful presentation, great job.
Thank you.
And, um, we're on to, uh, item four, citizen input. Um, you, uh, for those that want to come forward and speak, you've got four minutes. I would just ask, knowing that you, what you heard tonight, uh, maybe keep your comments to that because we know we're going to have a community engagement down the road. We don't know if it's going to be three or four stories. We just don't know yet, so. Good evening and welcome. Good evening and welcome.
Hi Lynn, can I have your sheet? For the speak, you need to fill out the yellow half sheet, which is available in the back of the room, please.
Okay, um, we're not going to be everything for everybody, okay? And, uh, I understand opinions when you make issues and you make mistakes as a board, but you've got eight or nine people here, and a lot of you aren't going to be around for development in a few years if you're not reelected, okay? And there's no guarantee everybody sitting here is going to be the same, and nobody agrees on anything. There's always a lot of percentage of you that don't agree. So I really think that you should have a definite guideline for the height of buildings and everything else. I think it's necessary because these same people aren't going to be together, okay? And, uh, I feel sorry for you, Bob, that you inherited such a mess with our financial situation. And, um, speaking to the comment from trustee Baum, uh, I did call BMO, and I guess I'm a little confused on us even keeping, uh, Bailey Copeland. When, when a person in her job, okay, uh, the properties were bought based on her opinion, not appraisals, okay? She gets paid on those opinions and those sales. And I think it's a big conflict of interest to have the same person doing this job. I'm not impressed. I don't have to be, I guess. I'm just a taxpayer like some of you are, okay? But I think there's a real problem here. And, uh, when a person making commission without appraisals, and you're listening to her, the past president listened to her opinion and paid those prices, and when I called Senator Conole up, he said, you people, what are you doing there? You overpaid for these properties. Who's telling you this? And I didn't say anything. And, uh, the project was botched up, and now we're still using the same person. I don't have the confidence in them at all. And also just one comment, when I call BMO, I call them, and I talked to the president of real estate for Wisconsin, and I asked him the question. I said, are you the person that knows what's going on if somebody calls you? He said, nobody has called him. And I said, well, I'm getting a report from somebody back home when we have meetings that they talked to you and you're not selling. He said, we're not. We just signed an eight-year lease, okay? And that's what I was told. And then he said, Lynn, I want you to talk to our attorney for Wisconsin. And I talked to him, and I tried to get his name off my phone, but it ain't, something's going on. But I can call, uh, John tomorrow from BMO. But that's what he said, so I'm a little confused as to what you're saying when you say you're talking to people. They're not lukewarm. Now, either they're lying to me, they're not telling her the truth, so I don't know. But I think if we're dealing with people here, uh, we should really know who we're dealing with, and I don't know why we have to stay with one person. And, uh, getting back to the TIDs, uh, if we're going to have TIDs, I think the residents should have an opposing opinion on TIDs from somebody who doesn't agree with them. I called the MacIver Institute today, and I was talking to Bill Osmoski, and I said, I didn't get a hold of him because I had called too late. I had some other issues at home I had to deal with, and, uh, but I think it'd be a good idea for the residents who are picking up the tab on this bill that they should hear another view on TIDs from somebody who doesn't think they're so great, and give us his opinion of which way we can make a decision. And there's no guarantee that he says, oh, and when these, when these TIDs are up, we're going to get $454 per home back in taxes. You may not even be on the board then, okay? There's no guarantee that we're going to get anything off of this. And so I'm just very skeptical about what I'm hearing tonight, and I understand all these educated people, and, uh, I have a family, my family in Florida owns two huge automobile dealerships, and what they do very well in Florida, what's happening is, uh, with their governor, they're building little complexes of homes where, when people are leaving Wisconsin because of the high prices and the taxes, okay? And if we keep having the same governors we have, we're going to have a problem. But, uh, what they're building there and developers, pardon?
Could you please wrap up your comments, please?
Okay. Do what?
Could you please wrap up your comments?
Oh, I'm trying to.
Okay.
This is important, okay? They're trying to be muzzled all the time. These poor residents are getting so upset with this, and you people talk and talk and talk, and you, you insult us, and it's just ridiculous. But they're building certain, you know what? Forget it. I am just so upset right now. I don't understand. I don't understand anymore what's going on here with the board. I really don't. You're not listening to the residents. You don't care, and it's a shame. It's really a shame.
Thank you for coming. Would anybody else like to speak tonight? Good evening and welcome.
Melanie Smythe, N140W17938, Cedar Lane. So I don't think that there should be, I may skip around a bit just because I wrote some random notes. I don't think there should be any work on the rezoning until at least one of the public meetings where you get public engagement occurs. There are a number of design flaws that were brought up about the market plots, being that it was only 150 feet wide. That's not very big. So I actually think that besides having charrettes, yes, we do need those, and workshops, and no steering of questions in any of the electronic surveys like the Rinca ones did. That was just prescribed questions, and we were being guided. So don't do that. But I do think that we should actually take a step back. I don't know that this is the right place for the market square. I actually think that the Blackstone Creek corner at opposite the village over here, where the golf course building is, might be a better place. That project is also in consideration. And you know, if we're just charging ahead because this is the current shiny thing that's available to us, then I do think that's a mistake. We've already taken a pause. Why wouldn't we stop and think about the ramifications of the entire Central Business District? And what are the best places for these types of activities for the long haul? This is one of the flaws of the 2050 Plan. It did not go into the village center, as Director Ratzlof has mentioned previously. And I do think that we should stop, if we have a little bit of time, take the time to really think about these two projects because they are at bookends of the Central Business District, if you want to call it that way. And they will have significant outcomes on what eventually will happen when they start meeting in the middle. Because at some point, some, the other apartment buildings are going to either want to be replaced that are in between them, someone is going to come along and buy those things and want to do something different. So I think this is an opportunity to stop for a second, stop charging ahead with this, really understand what the design flaws of the current proposal are, and actually talk about and think about what has been missing from the 2050 Plan, and that is the character and identity of the village. That part always gets skipped over. We don't have design standards. You know, we're talking about three stories, five stories, you know, so what? It doesn't really matter at this point when we might be making a big mistake by putting that market square there, and it's too small. It is too small. The other thing, the other comment that I have is, I think we should also wait a little bit because from a financial standpoint and a budget standpoint, we really need to have a strategic financial plan in this village, looking five years out. The economy is changing. There's declines coming. And we don't have, we haven't done our budget yet. We're, we are in, we will have a deficit. And as we keep adding all of this infrastructure, and we know we've got, what is it, $7 million worth of old farm lift stations to build, there are other priorities that may need our attention, our effort, and some of our dollars. So not considering those things along with this growth plan, I think is something that this group of people should really consider before we start marching ahead with this particular option one, two, or three. Those are my comments.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to come forward tonight? Good evening and welcome.
Sarah Larson, Butternut Road. Sorry, these are going to be a little bit random, but I do concur with everything that Melanie said. I know we all like to have a visual picture, and looking at the parking lot out in front of this building is probably the size of what that market plots would end up being. And if you're going to hold a large community event, that is ridiculous of a small space. And so I do think Blackstone would be a better area. Regarding the zoning and the height in particular, I think without having a firm parameter in there saying the threshold of three stories, yes, maybe once in a while an exception could be made, but without a constraint, there's going to be a perpetual justification, and it's just going to be, "Oh, now we've made the exception once. Now we can justify doing it again because we've already set the precedent that we're going to do it all the time." And suddenly, "Oh, our standard is five stories," when that wasn't what the community wanted. And it is refreshing to see the school district and the village on the same page, and one does impact the other. And for one entity to forge ahead and do something without consideration of the other is short-sighted because you may not have a referendum, but your actions could cause the other party and vice versa. And it all comes down to our money. The other thing is, the one slide indicated that if six, seven, and eight closed, that there would be $491,000 approximately in expendable money for either a tax decrease or further spending. That isn't really true because we have $200,000 or $300,000 of staff salaries wrapped up in those TIDS. We shouldn't be diverting salary and having a deceiving budget of what our total costs really are. So if you suddenly don't have those salaries being covered in those TIDS, you've got to pay for them somewhere. They're going to go back to the budget. And so, no, we wouldn't have $491,000 of excess. We shouldn't be doing a TID for residential. Let the developer handle their expenses on their own. It would be different if we were guaranteed commercial or something else in there, but we know that that isn't going to be. Let's see here. Regarding the use of Bailey Copeland and Rinca, I have a problem with ethics. Bailey worked for Gray Wolf. She was involved in the acquisition of the flower source in Ascension for Gray Wolf. So she knew what they paid, and yet she allowed the village to pay more for those properties when there was no improvement to the flower source property. And then she's earned hundreds of thousands of dollars now off of the backs of the taxpayers on her commission. How is that fiscally responsible that isn't? And you know, now she's saying, "Oh, here's this timeline, and we'll do this, and then we'll have information to make a prudent financial decision." Shouldn't that have been eight or nine months ago already that we would have been making decisions based on true and accurate information? I think that's negligent. And then we saw, as Rinca was presenting their information, they lack integrity. They were caught on several misrepresentations that they made to try and paint the picture a certain direction and misstating things that people said. We should be dealing with people who have integrity, especially when this is going to have a lasting impact. I don't trust Rinca to be able to conduct any kind of unbiased information gathering that isn't steered or not properly publicized. If we're going to be looking for input, we should be running weekly notices in Express News for several weeks in the lead-up because, let's face it, unless you're a geek like what we're called the front row, where we follow this stuff, most of the village isn't going and saying, "Oh, I better look at the village website today to see if they're going to have a survey." They aren't. You know, you've got to have it in a lot of media sources in order to get the desired impact. So I think, too, the last item to touch on is to say, "Oh, we need to have this TID or whatever so we can control this." Well, guess what? You already have control. You control the zoning. You control the plan commission. You control the village board. And if we had properly published development guidelines, there, we wouldn't have to be worrying about whether someone's going to make it look like Disneyland or not. If they have guidelines to follow as to what our expectations are, we have control, and you have a vote. So there. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward, please? Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Scott Effley, W159, N10514, Old Farm Road, Horse German Town. I'm not going to rehash all the comments made. I agree with most of what I heard from people that came up here. And you know, I've been coming to these meetings for four years, asking for neighborhood meetings, and I'm not asking for consultant and developer meetings. I'm asking for our own staff to run it. The community development area, along with the plan commission, with maybe some input from the EDC. I don't know why that's too much to ask, why we have to have developers run all of the things we're doing here. We want true unfettered input. You have people on commissions that donate their time to try to help this community, and they have a voice, too. And I'm not speaking of myself. There's others, okay? Why not let them? Why does the developer have to lead the witness, like was mentioned, and go forward and say, "This is the way it's going to be, and this is what I want the result to be," and all that bologna? Ask the residents. You guys are all residents, too. Ask the residents serving on these commissions. Look at the EDC. We have the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce. That is an important person in this village. We have a school board director. That is an important person in this village. We are not asking those people about what they want, about what their input is. We are leaving it in the hands of a developer to run a quick 30-minute, 40-minute thing with fancy texting and saying, "That's, we're good. We're good with that." That's what we did a few months ago. And I'm hoping we're not just going down that road again because that would be the definition of insanity, doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result. Enough on that. Sutton Farms is not a walkable area. You tell me where the Central Business District is. I'm listening. You'd have to walk a mile to get to something, okay? So when we say we want to make it condensed in a central, then we shouldn't have done Sutton Farms. It's not near anything. It isn't. I mean, it's not. It will be someday. Well, that's not a central business district, is it? We've got empty buildings over there. We've got a dollar store. I don't get it. So when they say it's a walkable area, that, I'll leave that alone. Spur 16, you know how Mequon's wonderful and everything's great. Let's be like Mequon. Spur 16, as I recall from the people that were experts here that developed that, it took 15 or 16 years to have that thing come to fruition. Not six months, not nine months. The flower source was sold, what, two years ago? And now we have all these massive plans that just develop everything. There was a community engagement. Those experts came and sat here and said there was a lot of community development, community engagement. I see a very quick process. We've got to hurry up and get this done, get this done. I don't know what the hurry is. I agree with Mr. Warren. We put, you guys have put time and effort. People like me have put time and effort. People sitting here have put time and effort into it, and that's fine. We're not saying, "Let's not do anything." We're saying, "Let's do it right." Because you guys sitting up there, you village board trustees, these are permanent decisions that you're making, permanent, you know? You made a permanent decision to sell properties, and now if you, if you just sell them, you're going to lose money, okay? That was a decision made by the majority of this board, all right? So you've got to be careful with the decisions you make. They have consequences. You have, with all of this going on, there's consequences. If you're going to build all these projects, that's a bunch of infrastructure going in you have to take care of for 100 years. How's our budget looking? Not too good, right? The final thing I'll say is, it was, I didn't hear it mentioned by anybody tonight. The properties that we own, that the village owns, you know what? If you sold them, they'd go back on the tax rolls, whereas right now, they're not paying any taxes, the ones that you guys own. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward and speak tonight? Good evening and welcome.
Doug Lowman. Where do I live? Riversbend Circle. Here, it's our, just a couple of things. And I'm going to start out with hindsight is 2020. We, there were some comments made this evening regarding, I believe it was Saxony Village, about what a previous board did and poo-pooing on that previous board and how that was the wrong thing to have done at that time. Hindsight is 2020. The biggest thing about it is, is that the people who voted for that back then aren't here to defend themselves here tonight against that. That's a simple thing to do. People vote for things like what's proposed, we're talking about doing here this evening. People that vote for that, then someday a future board's going to sit there and say, "Oh, they didn't know what they were doing." Same old thing, all over again. It is absolutely useless. And it doesn't, it does not add to what we're trying to accomplish here, and that's coming from that, towards constituents about, well, sometimes our constituents don't really know what they want, and we, we need to do it for them. I can't believe I need to sit here and say this. We have a representative government. We represent our constituents. If you don't like representing your constituents and got to do things like your mother and father, please resign your position. The 2050 Plan, there was a lot of effort put into it without, without any pressure on, it was just pure abstract thought put into it. There wasn't any developers here. It wasn't any pressures to move pieces of property or, or anything like that. I look at it sort of like a football team, a pro football team, trying to figure out, "Okay, when are we going to do for a point after or two points after? So when are we going, we're going to game that out when we don't have any pressure? We're going to write it down, put it down in writing, and that's what we're going to do when we're in the fourth quarter. There's 12 seconds left. We can tie the game or we can try to win it." You know? And that's the way I look at that 2050 Plan. You know, I really wondered why all that effort was going into it at the time. And we constantly change that, you know? And it depends on what's going on at the time, you know, to the point of, "Boy, I'd like this changed. Would you like $80,000? I can give you $80,000." And boom, "Oh, yeah, we can, we can change that." To me, that's just a prostitution of the mind. I, I, I really think that Director Ratzlof should not give you a positive recommendation on any changes. And negative one, yeah, see, I can see that. Other than that, he should give you a neutral recommendation with, you know, his, "Okay, if you guys vote for this, it's got to meet these conditions." You know, he shouldn't recommend four. And it's a very simple reason, is because, you know, something comes up, trustee president is talking to the bureaucrats and saying, "What the hell's going on here?" Bureaucrats just sit there and say, "Well, you guys voted for it." It's as simple as that, you know? So why, why not just take that away? And, and, and so that remains prominent in the representative's mind. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak tonight? Good evening and welcome.
Judy Rogers, W165, N10611, Wagon Trail. I want to say thank you, okay? You have put in a lot of work, and I appreciate that you stopped the process. You have put in a lot of work and I appreciate that you stopped the process and you are involving people in the decision-making. Because what became evident tonight is the fact that you're responsible to the people who voted you in. Comments that I don't know anything about the Saxony Village situation, but saying that it was wrong to do what the constituents wanted, that's wrong, okay? It is a representative government. And I don't know what kind of oath you took when you took your positions, but I do think it is to represent the people. And if the people are wrong, you still have to back them because that's what you're here for, okay? This started out tonight with something about age and the median age. Sorry, being somebody who is north of that median age, what's wrong with that? People are living longer and they're staying vibrant longer. They're staying active longer. Also at that point in time, they have a little bit more discretionary money to spend in the village, okay? When I first heard about the village center, I thought it was a wonderful thing, okay? But it wasn't, didn't turn out to be what I initially was presented with. I've heard about this marketplace and how small it is. Went to Fireman's Park last week, Rebel Grace, Great Park. There had to be at least 1,000 to 1,500 people that showed up that night for a real good concert. And that is the kind of space that you need if you want to have village involvement in something to bring it together. You're not going to have that over there on Pilgrim and Mequon. You talk about apartments and people want walkability and to be able to bike. Do you want walking and pedestrians and bikes on Pilgrim or Mequon Road? Where are they going to go? Okay, I, I don't want any more congestion there. I'm sorry. I think then you better put EMTs right there because that's where they're going to be needed. I don't see that. You talk about affordability, 100% there with what Meg said. You start talking about those luxury apartments, 1,600, yeah, 1,600 is at the bottom. You go up 2,000, that's not affordable. How you solve this affordability issue, I don't know. But I don't think that putting more dense units in one place is the answer to that question, okay? And if there's amenities, okay, a picture that I saw at that village center, small skating rink, small chess board. If those are the kind of amenities, I'm sorry, no, I don't want those amenities. They're not for me, they're for people who live there. So yeah, I want the lower height. I heard in the beginning that there was underground parking. So now you're saying first floor parking and then the apartments above it. So all this information that we're getting seems to be changing. And so having said that, I think that we need to stop and get the citizens' input. And you need to get it out there in multiple forms so that people do know. I will do my best to get all of my neighbors in Old Farm. And, oh, that was one more issue I wanted to bring up. You talked about the school and the impact, roads. Anybody happy with roads here in Germantown? Anybody like going down Division Road? How long is it going to take to get that fixed? And I know there's a lot of issues there. I live on the corner of Old Farm and Wagon Trail. Simple resurfacing, uh-uh. Now the, something that should have happened for a month, now we're looking at two months because there's a lot of sewer work being done. So you've got problems and you've got things that are going to cost. And like I've heard previous to this tonight, there's a lot of budget issues. And we know that if we're going to solve those things, our taxes are going to go up. So let's not add to that, please. But thank you. Thank you for taking the time to stop and not rush into this. I do appreciate what everybody is doing here and I appreciate everybody's opinion because it counts, everybody counts.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak tonight? Good evening and welcome.
Hello, everybody. I'm Scott Frater and 96 W. 19602 County Line. In the discussion on multifamily development policy, there's a really wonderful presentation that was put up here. A lot of really good, useful information in there. And I think Mr. Ratzloff actually let in on the point I'm about to make. Single family versus multifamily are both very broad definitions. Multifamily especially in that it can incorporate owner occupied rental, common ingress, egress, or separated, lots of classifications of different housing there. And to go along with those statistics, things like the number of students that a unit will contribute to the school district or, you know, tax revenue per unit, stuff like that. I think the presentation didn't go into the level of detail it maybe should have in, in the owner occupied versus rental space. Rental by its nature is going to be more transitory because the owner or the person living in it doesn't have equity in it. You know, they're, they're not tied down to it. They have no incentive to stay put for a very long time and maybe keep their kids in school there. And then what I'm getting to here really is that is a limit on multifamily really the question we should be asking? Or should we be looking more at the mix of owner occupied versus rental, regardless of whether it's a detached structure or a larger building as a whole? Mainly for those impacts on schooling tax, et cetera. I don't think that the statistics presented maybe gave the best picture of that distinction. Maybe that's something we should look at more in future. But as it exists today, the single versus multifamily question, it sounds like the board is on a pretty rational track that the market should mostly be deciding what our mix is and how it's applied. With Sutton Farms, Blackstone, Creakin Village Center, we're, we're making a big pivot towards multifamily in a way that we haven't before, based on the mix that was put up there. And it seems like these are going to be kind of the tell of where the future is going to go. Maybe we've got to just see what these turn into. And if a question comes up in the future on limiting, as we're looking at tonight, I think that's the time to answer it. And once we know the impact. But to wrap it up, I, I think the more pressing question that we should be asking and more where we should be seeking our information is owner occupied versus rental. Is that a mix we should look at more closely? And that's really what I got for you. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak tonight? Okay, thank you.
Yes, Steve. We do have two that were submitted electronically. The first one was from Sienna Silverman. And she did asset before we read this. Mentioned that this, these are her views as a, as a resident of Germantown and did not represent her employer, Shore West Realty. As a, as both a Germantown resident of 27 years and a local residential Realtor for over 15 years, I've had the privilege of working with countless families and individuals who want to call Germantown home. Through my work in and around Germantown, I've heard a constant message from both current residents and prospective buyers. Germantown lacks a vibrant central place where people can live, gather, and stay without having to go elsewhere. That's why I believe it's time for Germantown to support and move forward with the Village Center project. Many of my clients, especially younger buyers, downsizing seniors and working professionals are looking for a walkable mixed-use spaces with access to restaurants, shops, and community amenities. Right now, they want, they turn to surrounding communities like Menominee Falls, Cedarburg, or Mequon to find the lifestyle they want. We're missing opportunity to keep that energy investment and sense of community right here in Germantown. Equally important is our need to diversify housing options. While Germantown has long been known for its beautiful single-family neighborhoods, not everyone is in a position to buy a home, nor does everyone want to. The inclusion of high-quality rental apartments in the Village Center project would fill a need for our community. People at all stages of life and income levels should have a chance to live here. We need housing that reflects the real needs of our community, whether it's for young professionals just starting out, families in transition, or older adults looking to downsize and stay local. It's also important to recognize that higher density is both appropriate and required for a town center like this to be successful. Density brings foot traffic and customer base needed to support retail, dining, and other amenities that make these places vibrant and sustainable. Without enough residents living nearby, businesses will struggle and the entire vision risks falling short. We need higher density and housing in Germantown. And while it may not be appropriate in all areas of our village, the Village Center is definitely an area where it feels essential. This also seems to be the ideal place for a TID. So I was disappointed to see it put on pause. I hope it will move forward again as it is needed for a big project like this, especially in today's development and financing environment. Whether or not this would be the first time Germantown includes residential within a TID, the reality is that residential is an essential part of mixed-use development. A TID that includes residential is not unusual. It's simply what, what's required to make a project of this scale viable in today's market. Beyond serving residents' needs, a project like this should bring significant financial benefits to the village. Mixed-use developments increase the local tax base, generating more property tax revenue per acre than traditional single-use zoning. This added tax base can support public services, infrastructure, and schools without increasing the burden on existing residents. It seems to be fiscally responsible investment in Germantown's future. As a resident who loves his community and wants to continue to live and work here, and as someone who talks to prospective buyers about what they're looking for regularly, I can confidently say that the Village Center project is not just wanted, it's needed. Unfortunately, I'll be out of town for this next public meeting and comment period, but I wanted to provide my perspective and insights. Feel free to read this into the public record and contact me with questions. Thank you for your time and consideration, Sienna Silverman. The second was from Pat Tasker. Dear members of the Germantown Village Board and Plan Commission, as you come together tonight to explore ideas for future Village Center, I encourage you to approach the conversation with open minds and visionary thinking. When presented with new ideas, rather than dismissing them with, that won't work here, I urge you to instead ask, how can we make this work for Germantown? That kind of forward-looking perspective is what will bring our community into the future. Please don't assume the voices you hear at every meeting speak for everyone. I remember early discussions, people showed up and expressed opinions for this type of area. I clearly remember when a woman from the Preserve shared how much she'd love to bike with her kids to a Village Center to get ice cream or enjoy live music. Others were in favor of this. Just listen, not everyone is against this. In my work, I constantly meet people who want to live in Germantown but can't find a home right anyway, rut, can't find a home right, and anyway end up renting elsewhere. Quality rental options, especially for those starting new jobs in the area, are limited. Germantown is perfectly positioned for those working north of Milwaukee or at places like Broon and Hartford or John Deere in Morikat, who still want access to the amenities and sense of community we offer. But we need places for them to live. If we get them as renters and they live in experienced Germantown, they will stay and become homeowners. Lastly, when we move forward with the Village Center, let's not just cop could set us apart and become a pride for generations. P.S., when it comes to a TID, I know that everyone seems against that for anything residential, but I have noticed in the Business Journal reports of several Milwaukee suburbs doing TIDS for projects that do include residential. Is that unique or a new trend? I'm not sure, but I've seen several in the past 60 days. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration. Sincerely, Pat Tasker, your local market expert and Germantown resident.
Thank you very much. We're now on to item five announcements. We have none. Before we adjourn, I just want to thank everyone for being in, in the audience. My fellow commissioners, trustees, it was a wonderful conversation tonight. We do have a path forward and we're going to be reviewing that timeline in the near future. We will have community engagement. Again, I apologize for the late hour, but I think this was certainly a time well spent. So thank you very much. We are adjourned at 9:43 PM. Thank you. Thank you for coming and please drive home safe.